...of an annual, but see, the reason it's spread out like that is because there's so much that's supplied. You see, all you do is just skip.
Well, I understand all of that.
Well, there's no legal reason for me believing that. It's just basically that service is what was all in surplus in general, but there's probably a lot of that, but it's... That's hidden there, definitely. That's a policy decision. What you're saying is, they go to the way. Now, it's nice to say, oh, that's saving, let's... It was for a budget, but see, eventually it ends, and the saver said, well, we don't have any either present... Extreme, oh, we need the taxes for these savings. Well, then, if you did that, then you gotta raise it again now. So, the idea is, if you don't, you don't assume anything is saved. They may not have as little as they should have. That's the risk of it, you have savings only for the first year or whatever. As long as, because those bills want to come back.
The December 12th, 2011, meeting of the Board of School Directors of East Penn School District was hereby come to order. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item we will have on the agenda tonight is a request to address the board. The first item that I have is Mr. Rob Hamel of...
Fifteen hundred votes in high court.
Sorry, I have a hard time reading. Keeping the tax limit at 1.7 percent.
Yeah, thank you. You'll be voting on a budget index resolution tonight, and I would request that you do not increase the tax index by more than 1.7 percent. Last Thursday, was it? I gave you, I tried to distribute the Pennsylvania state pension liabilities, which basically show a 500 percent increase from 2011 to 2016, '17. We're not funding our pension liabilities. It's a asset that our public employees do have that's not shared by the private sector. Did everybody receive this last week?
Yes.
Okay. This week's Wall Street Journal, there was a good editorial, "Public School Teachers Are Not Underpaid." I made nine copies of it, if you'd like to see it. And basically, it makes a statement saying that teachers receive about 52 percent more than could in private business. And the third was in, the third article was in the Wall Street Journal today from Randstad Employee, and what it says is, "Two-thirds of the employees report they've been willing to make some sacrifice to keep their jobs. Given the opportunity for an annual bonus is the most palatable option while taking lesser job demotion is least attractive." But basically, two-thirds of employees said that they would be willing to make some sacrifices. If our public schoolteachers are not underpaid because of the pension, mostly the pension issue, and to some degree, the health care issue, I would think that you could freeze the salaries again this year, like you did last year, wonderful thing that you did. And I don't think that this is the right time, and probably won't be for a while, to be raising taxes, especially when most people that I talked to see no need to do that for... Most people don't see any need to do it, and they think they're being overtaxed to begin with.
Steel, if you'd like to distribute these three articles.
Why don't you give them to Ms. Burtzle and show the script to her.
The next person on my list for public comment is Mr. William Bolger of McCounty, speaking on school vouchers.
Thank you. My statement's about the general item number seven, the tuition vouchers. The online posted agenda does not have this resolution, and without it, the public has no time to review or provide any citizen input. So, I request that no vote be taken until people have an opportunity for input. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hamel. The next item I have on the agenda, or excuse me, the person to speak, is Ms. Fawn Strunk of McCounty, Pennsylvania.
Hi, I'm speaking tonight about, the green piece of paper has the number thirteen on it in the packet, "Resolution Opposing Tuition Vouchers by the Board of Directors of East Penn School District." I find this document to be divisive and controversial. This document has not been posted online with the school board agenda. I feel it should have been posted online with the school board agenda for public review. This document has not been available to the public prior to the meeting tonight by being placed online. The school district did not ask for the opinion of the community by asking for input or even an online survey before bringing this up for a vote tonight. The resolution is a one-sided argument. It appears to be ill-conceived, and it appears to be not written by any resident of our school district. I'd like to ask who wrote this resolution? Was there an attorney involved? Who paid for the attorney or the authors? Who were the authors of this resolution, and what organization produced it? This resolution does not represent the diversity in our community. If the board does have issues with parts of SV1 specifically, I think we should speak out against specific issues in SV1 and how they could be remedied, but not to condemn every and any voucher program in general. I feel that as citizens, we have First Amendment rights to speak, and that freedom of speech also means that others shouldn't be speaking for us. This represents, and it references the East Penn School District, and as a resident of that school district, I don't appreciate others speaking for us and not giving opposing points of view. My family is a part of the East Penn School District, we're taxpayers. My father-in-law graduated from the East Penn School District in the graduating class of 1958. I have three children who attend East Penn School District, and this doesn't represent any of our three generations in the East Penn School District, nor our opinions. When I attended a workshop that was given by the Pennsylvania School Board Association earlier this year, and I know a couple of the school board members here were in that class with me, this publication from the School Board Association says that school boards should devote sufficient time, thought, and study to proposed actions. The PSBA says that the school board should encourage ideas and opinions from students, staff, and citizens, and the school board should try to incorporate their views into deliberations and decisions, and that means the views of students, staff, and citizens. I'm asking the board to please not bring this resolution for a vote. There is a great deal of diversity in our community, and I don't think this resolution represents everyone in our community. I feel we can all contact our representatives on our own. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Strunk. That's the last form I have for public input at this time. We'll now move on to approval of minutes. Can I have a motion, please?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the minutes? None appearing, all in favor of approving minutes, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Minutes are approved. At this point, we'd like to welcome Scott Shearer, Managing Director of Public Financial Management, for what I hope to be a very welcome presentation, Mr. Shearer.
All right, well, thank you, good evening. Yes, hopefully, everyone finds the news as exciting as we did today. If you remember, I was here back on November 14th to get the authorization to proceed to refinance the district's Series A of 2006 bonds, outstanding approximately around an amount of eight and a half million. Since that time, we put together a lot of paperwork, and a lot of work has been done by your administration, so thanks to them for not only participating, handling the credit rating phone call, which you'll find the rating agency reaffirmed the very good credit rating of the school district of AA2, as well as also the administration putting a lot of time into helping us with the official statement that needs to be sent around for all the investors, the one of my day bond. So, you know, again, it was a great team effort, and from a timing perspective, I think you're gonna find out that everything worked out very well. We saw results today from the auction that took place at 11:00 AM this morning that were probably one of the best I've ever seen. I think if you ask some of the other folks on the finance team, including your legal counsel, I think they can probably say the same thing, that what I'm gonna present with the blue handout, again, is what I figured, it's absolutely incredible results. We were all actually a little bit astonished when we saw the results come in today as we were watching the auction. So, just real briefly, the first couple pages, and I won't go over, is the actual credit rating report from Moody's Investor Service that again reaffirms the AA2 credit rating of the school district, credit rate. If you put that in perspective, the highest credit rating you can get is a AAA. Then underneath AAA is a AA1, and then you're AA2. So, you're only basically two knots away from the top notch. But what you're gonna see, which is what astonished us the most, is your actual bonds today actually traded better, sold better with interest rates were lower than a natural AAA credit. We represent a couple of the natural A credits around the Commonwealth and outside the state, and again, what we saw here through the competitive auction was actually better results than the highest credit rating entity that you can get, which began added to the savings. So, if we turn to page five, the handout we cover, this is something that we see on every one of our bond sales, it's a summary of the bids that we received. The top third of this are the eight different bidders that participated, the first one being Morgan Keegan, all the way down to US Bancorp. Column two is how we evaluate the bids. Basically, look at the fees that they propose, and the interest rates, and whether or not they need insurance. And you can see that the true interest cost range from a 2.07% up to a 3.14%. Just to sort of put things in perspective, so when I was here on the 14th of November, I was showing savings somewhere, you know, around $200,000, net savings. And that's net of issuance costs and net of states share of reimbursement. As I mentioned at that meeting, we had a little bit of conserv in this building of those interest rates, because we weren't sure exactly when we were gonna price the bond. We're targeting this meeting, but depending on what the climate was out there, we might push it into January. So, we had a lot of work to do, and we weren't sure which way the market was gonna go. Obviously, everything going on overseas, and it has things see someone around all over the place. So, on that date, we were showing net savings, that's the way we always present everything, net of all fees and net of state reimbursement, roughly $200,000. Since that point, the actual interest rate curve in the part that directly correlates to your transaction as far as duration, that dropped about 35 basis points. That's good. That's equivalent, 35 basis point movement in interest rates is about $250,000 additional savings. So, we had the market obviously moving our favor, another good thing, added to the savings. The other thing which I think is incredible, if you're looking at column two, on the top half, on the top third, page five, the range of those bids, range from 2.07% to 3.14%, that's a difference of $750,000. So, the first-place bid is $750,000 better than the last-place bid. So, again, that just shows you the competitive nature, you know, of the process that we do and how it benefits the school district. And you're gonna see how it all fits together here shortly, but that accounts for the additional amount of savings that the school district realized. All total, in column five, you see you received 65 bids. The auction went about 10 minutes longer than anticipated. It's supposed to shut down, it's supposed to go from 11:00 to 11:15, but because of all the activity going on, it actually went for another 10 minutes, which again was to your benefit, because you just had a couple of these lead bidders who are keeping each other up for lower and lower interest rate, which again benefited the district. At the bottom of page five, you know, what had been the normal protocol has proved extremely beneficial over the years for East Penn is selling your bonds with a five-year call feature. So, again, these bonds will be refinancable again in five years. Whether or not we will be able to, you know, will interest rates be lower than they are now, who knows? But, you know, we put that option on there, again, for the district to be able to refund that or put the control in your hands. On page six are the actual bids that we received. Obviously, we won't go over that, but you can see sort of the second-by-second, minute-by-minute action that took place here, all 65 bids. On page seven, that is the existing amortization of the 2006 A-bonds. So, you see in column two, roughly $9.4 million total principal. The interest rates in column three average out to about a 4%. See, they range from 3.55% up to 4.05%. One thing I will point out, and this was a discussion with the administration, if you see the payment dates, right now, the payment dates of the principal occur in January of each respective year. Well, that gets to be a little bit cumbersome, I think, from the administrative standpoint, and so, you know, through different discussions we had, we actually moved the payments up a little bit to, and you'll see it in one of the later schedules. Now, that added a little bit to the savings, maybe to the tune of $150,000 to $200,000 by moving the principal payments up, but again, I think that was more of a cash flow issue, actual positive issue that we made for the business office to do that. I think, again, that's just more of a house-linging item to make things go a little bit more smooth. On page nine, this is the important page, this is the new bonds today that have been sold. The interest rates over in column four, ranging from 0.85% out to 2.5%. That averages to about a 2% interest rate. That's locked in, fixed rate out through 2024. And then over in column 11, you see that the net savings spread out over multiple years, a little over $1.3 million. And the way you see that fall into place is roughly $150,000 in the 1213 year, and then about $184,000 or so for the next three years, and then about $315,000 for the next two years. So, again, substantial amount of savings. And just to give you an idea, the box on the bottom right on page nine, we usually show this for all of our refundings. A lot of times, you'll see the savings, you know, we look at that as a percent of what's being refunded. And the normal benchmark is, it's a good transaction if your net savings are about 2% of what's being refunded. And in your case, that's close to $200,000. Again, that's a normal benchmark used nationwide for this kind of transaction. Yours is close to 16%. Again, this is something that you do not see very often at all. I don't think I've ever seen one quite, that equates as high. Again, the big thing here is net savings after issuance costs and after the state share of the savings is $1,340,000. And then again, that is net of all the issuance costs on page 10. And probably the most important number on this is in the middle of the page where it says yield of issue. So, this is locked in at 2.02%. Basically, it went from 4% interest rate down to 2%, and that's what generated the savings over on the prior page. And so, just to give you an idea of how your transaction compared to some others, if you look at the next two pages, this is a comparable that we usually show for your transactions. On page 11 is the interest rates and different facts and figures related to your transaction that we bid out today. On the right-hand side is for a township of a similar credit rating, basically identical credit rating for a township out in the western part of the state. And you can see your interest rates, you know, where counted in your transaction, were about 70 to 80 basis points lower. We see the red numbers on the right-hand side, that means your rates are lower. And on the next page, page 12, again, comparing your transaction on the left to another school district with pretty similar credit ratings, one notch below. Again, your interest rates are 65 to 70 basis points better. And again, for this particular transaction, 10 basis points is equivalent to about $75,000. So, that's, and round numbers, if your rates are, you know, percent better, that's about $750,000 of additional savings. So, again, extremely good results that we sold today. Just to look at one more point on page 13, this is a chart that we typically show from almost all of our presentations. It's all the outstanding debt of the school district. And we look at this, obviously, to always monitor any kind of refunding opportunities. Your business office looks at it for budgeting purposes, so it's a widely-used schedule. And the one thing I just want to point your attention to, just to sort of put on the radar screen, we're always looking at opportunities to refund any debt for you. It's been going pretty well. Since I've been working on the accounts since 1998, we've been able to achieve refunding savings of now almost close to $10 million that have been realized since 1998. Most of the refunding savings come at, you know, quarter of a million dollars a pop, $400,000 or $500,000. This is obviously the biggest one that we've seen. But to date, since 1998, almost $10 million of refunding savings that the district have realized. So, we're always watching very closely. Columns five and 10 are the next two that we have on our radar screen. Those are called towards the end of 2012. We're watching them closely. They are legally able to be refinanced today because of what the purpose of those bonds were for. However, because of the market, it sounds a little bit odd, but because interest rates are so low, not so much the borrowing interest rates that we select today, but the investment interest rates. I mean, I think you've probably all heard at board meetings that the investment rates for short-term securities are extremely low, you know, half percent, quarter percent, if you're lucky. Well, what would happen if we issued new bonds today to refinance those 04 double A's or 07s? You'd have to put that money aside in an investment account until the bonds are called for. But that's actually what's producing negative arbitrage. It's extreme inefficiency and advanced refunding. So, although some of these bonds are legally able to be refinanced, they are not worth pursuing at this point in time just because of the negative arbitrage. So, this is something, obviously, we're gonna continue to monitor and hopefully be back to you when we get closer to the call date. But basically, what happens, every day you get closer to the call date in this environment, your savings will actually, on those transactions, will actually start to get more efficient and get better just because you're reducing that negative arbitrage. So, hopefully, you know, around the summertime, we will be back, maybe late spring, we will be back and start talking to you about these transactions. And if the market's there, obviously, we'll, you know, bring it to you. If it's not, you know, we'll just sort of sit tight. But those are the next two that we have on our radar screen that are most imminent. So, before I turn to the bond counsel, I will be more than happy to answer any questions you have with numbers.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Shearer, Ms. Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Shearer. Taking a look at page nine, in which we look at the savings of a $1.3 million over the life of the bond, I think it's important to note that that $1.3 million savings doesn't happen all in this year.
Correct.
It's over the life of the note, which extends out to 2025.
The bulk of it is over the next six years.
That's right. So, this year, should we vote to accept this, our savings will be $157,000.
Correct, for the 1213 year.
That's correct. For the, well, actually, for the budget we are anticipating looking at, yeah. So, it's not a $1.3 million windfall.
That's right.
For the 2012, 2013 year. But it's great savings over the life of the loan. Thank you.
Anyone else with questions? Ms. Stancis.
Yes, I was here for our last bond financing. And is there a protocol looking for a certain minimum amount for refinancing?
Longstanding practice in the district has been to look for $200,000 or more, and that's an opportunity that we will discuss when Mr. Shearer brings it up. And so, they come to us and say, we found an opportunity that will make you at least $200,000. Do you want to consider it?
And is that for the one year or for the life of the bond?
It's for whatever they can get.
That's in total. Again, it's a net, that's net of issuance cost and reimbursement, but that's the full amount of savings.
Okay, Mr. Parker.
In the past, we've, it seems like we've gotten more off-sum payments in the early years. It looks like at this time, we're actually reducing our payment schedule.
Over time, we agree.
From the way we've handled it in the past.
Well, it ranges, and the way the savings fall into place is a result of the way your existing bonds are structured. If you go back to page, page seven, you look in column two. This particular bond issue, when it was originally issued for its new money purposes, if you go back well in time, which would have been probably the early 2000s or late 90s, when, you know, basically, a pot of money, let's say roughly $10 million was issued in the late 90s, early 2000s, and it's been refinanced twice since then. That deal was structured, it was called a wraparound, where there wasn't a whole lot of principal in the beginning years, but then it sort of dovetailed where your existing debt paid off. And that was to issue debt for a lower budget impact or lower mileage impact, which a lot of districts take advantage of. So, the way, the reason why the savings are falling in over multiple years is if you look in column two on page seven, there's not a lot of principal being repaid over the next, you know, five or six years. And then the bigger principal payments start after that. So, when you're doing these kind of refinancing, that's sort of how the savings have fallen into place. If you would have full principal payments, if you went in column two, then the savings would have just occurred over the next year or two, which is probably more, has been the norm over the past bunch of years with your refinancing. But again, this is just the way that the original deal was structured back in time to take advantage of, for the mileage reduction, if you will. That's why the savings are falling in over time. And it actually works out, you know, real good in this particular case in that, in very rough numbers, if you go back to page 13, and you go all the way over to column 19, most of the time, you know, when you do a refunding, or when any entity does a refunding, you'll realize savings in one or two years or so, and then your debt service will go back up to where it was before the refunding. And that's, you know, traditionally how it's done. The way your debt is structured, which is working out very well here, is if you go to column 19, the way the savings fell into place here is before. So, if you look, if you would have this page in front of you from before this transaction, you were basically level debt service at around $16 million out through the 17, 18 fiscal year, and then it drops off. Well, now, because of this refunding, you're level at about $15.7 million or so, and then it drops off. So, because of this refunding, you're actually not gonna see any kind of blip back up. You're now gonna be sort of level at this new lower running rate until your debt drops off. So, this is actually kind of even a better situation where you don't see that blip occur back up a few years later.
Other questions?
Ms. Stancis.
I'm sure it's here somewhere, but what would have been the total payback now? And then what is the total payback with every final?
It, well, basically, if you go to column nine, oh, I'm sorry, not column nine. If you go to, if you go to page nine, and you compare columns nine and 10. So, column 10 on page nine, where it says existing local effort. So, that would be your fiscal year payments after state reimbursement. If you did nothing, that would be what you would continue to pay. And that totals $11,332. Column nine is the new local effort for this transaction. And you see the payments, and you see that totals $9,992. Well, that difference is column 11. So, the difference between sort of the before and after is the $1,340,000 savings. That's how it's generated.
And would it be possible to get copies of the perspective?
I'm sorry?
Would it be possible to get copies of the perspective?
Oh, sure, yeah.
A couple?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think your business office in about 10 days will receive, typically, what, you get maybe 10 of them or so? 10 hard copies? Yeah. So, that will be coming, hard copy will be coming in the mail shortly.
Mr. Shearer, I don't see anybody else, so I'll put my questions in. You very quickly skipped over pages one and two, the Moody's. You very quickly skipped over pages one and two, the Moody's Investor Service comments on the district's financial policy. And I'm presuming that there are positive comments about our debt service, our conservative fiscal management practices, our fund balance amounts, and the fact that we are conservative in doing those things, are one of the reasons why we maintain the rating that we did from them?
That's absolutely correct. That's correct. Yeah, I sort of skipped over quickly, we reviewed it before, and I sort of wanted to get to the meat of the presentation, but yeah, that's actually, they cite those different facts.
Because I was, I was actually kind of stunned by the positiveness of these statements about the district's fiscal policy. This is even stronger than I've seen it in previous bond rating reports.
Yeah, I would say that's correct, yes. I mean, double-A, two-credit rate, that's a very good credit rate, no matter if you're county, school district, city, whatever the case may be. I mean, again, you're basically, you know, two notches from the very, very top. But it's, yes, I mean, they had a lot of very good comments in this, in the rating report. This is from Moody's Investor Service, you know, third-party independent agency, which are looking at things very, very closely, a lot more strictly now than they weren't in the past through the market meltdown. And so, yeah, you received some very good comments from them.
And these are the people who are talking about reducing the credit rating of the federal government.
Correct.
Okay.
One of them already has. Not Moody's.
I know, but they've mentioned it.
Yeah, yes.
It's a lot of warning, I believe.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, well, I think we should get the resolution on the floor before we bring in the bond counsel. And I've been asked by the solicitor to change one word in the printed resolution to change issuance to refunding. So could I have a motion on forward? Tell me what could that change? All right.
Good evening. My name is Jens Dombler. I'm a partner with the law firm of Rosenstein, and one of the members of the municipal finance department within our firm. I'm here with Kit Wood, who served you now many years, and is bond counsel to the district, and I've been working with him in connection with this particular transaction. So I'd like to summarize for the board the resolution that was handed out this evening, which is the final form of the resolution that was presented or prepared in a draft form and available for public inspection as required by the Pennsylvania Local Government Unit Debt Act. So I'm talking about this document right here. It's, it's one that was just handed out this evening rather than probably the one that was, may have been in your minute, in your normal packet. And the reason we do that is because the numbers that are in here reflect the bid results that were received this morning. So we prepare all that, get it in our bag, and then we come out here. And it's, we've circulated as quickly as we could with members of the administration and the solicitor, who has, Mr. Fisher has had a copy of the draft, and which is pretty much identical, but for the additional amounts in here, the final principal amount, final interest rates, et cetera. Very briefly, this, the bond issue is structured in the traditional fixed-rate format that this district has been. Often, we also have variable rate debt, this is one of your fixed-rate bond issues, and it's structured in the same manner as the bonds that are being refunded. So in effect, we are replacing fixed-rate bonds with a new series of fixed-rate bonds structured in an identical manner, except for the change in the principal payment dates, as Scott mentioned. And also, with a couple, we've followed any nuance regarding the computerized registration of bonds, as you know, you may recall now for a number of years now, they've eliminated actual certificates that represent the bonds, now they use a book-entry-only system through a New York organization called the Positive Trust Corporation. All that is in here. Any new requirements from the Securities and Exchange Commission, the Municipal Securities Rulemaking Board, the IRS, and so on, are all reflected in the resolution. And suffice it to say that we've assured compliance with those rules and laws in preparing transactions. What we'll be doing from here out is to satisfy those rules in regards to the final preparation of the prospectus, we call it the official statement, a preliminary one was prepared and used in the market, and the bonds, the bidders received a copy of that and used that as the basis for, again, they're obviously impressed by what they saw and given these aggressive bids. By the SEC rules, the final one must be prepared within seven business days, and that's what will be circulated with all the final numbers in and the final interest rates, et cetera. We'll be filing this resolution, it's adopted together with other documents that we have left with the administration to be filed, to be signed in the next few days. That's a final process under the state borrowing statute, the Local Government Unit Debt Act. It's following that approval of those documents, and we can then have a closing for the bond issue as a condition precedent to having a valid and binding debt. The bonds, the security for the bonds is the pledge of a full-fledged credit and taxing power of the district, hence the main general obligation bonds, and that's the structure that you would use in the past with other of your debt, this traditional type of debt for school districts in Pennsylvania. Otherwise, suffice it to say that it's going to be familiar to you, the mechanics of the bond issue will work as it has in the past in terms of the payment through a paying agent bank who's been appointed, so one you've used in the past, and the various other mechanics that go into this type of bond issue.
Since we have a couple of brand-new board members, could you identify the job of what they do, or bond counsel?
Absolutely. Basically, our role as, in effect, special counsel, we sort of come onto the scene when there's a financing being considered, and we follow through with it. We're part of the financing team, it's made up of your financial advisor, solicitor, administration, and bond counsel. We're charged with focusing basically three areas of the law. First is the state borrowing laws. Every minute, entity that has taxing power has strict limits in the amount that can be borrowed and the procedure for which it must undertake to do that. It's basically the state keeps track of all debt through a record-keeping system that it maintains, and it reviews every borrowing document, the resolution in this case, to see that it complies with that statute known as the Local Government Unit Debt Act. And that's our job to see that this resolution and the other documents we produce comply with that law. That's what gives the bondholders the comfort that they will be repaid in the time they matter, and that in event of trouble, they have, in effect, a claim to the general taxing revenues and abilities of the district. Under the school code, a school district technically, well, would have unlimited borrowing capacity for taxing ability for debt that was issued prior to the enactment of Act One. Thereafter, they have a claim, their taxes raised for the payment of debt would all fall within the index. So you have so-called grandfather debt, non-grandfather debt. So those laws come into place in structuring the bond issue. The other areas are the federal securities laws, that we, these, these are securities, public debt, securities. They are not subject to the registration requirements that corporate stock is, but they are subject to the anti-fraud provisions of the securities laws, meaning that you must disclose to a potential investor the material information dealing with your proposed borrowing. And that's what this official statement's about. We give all the demographic and financial data pertaining to the district, information regarding the facilities of the district, its financial statements, its budget for the coming fiscal year, talks about the mechanics of the bond issue, that kind of information, that a knowledgeable investor would be interested in. And the final body of law, and a complex one, is that of the federal Internal Revenue Code. These are tax incentives, municipal bonds as we commonly call it. The bondholder expects that the interest that they receive, they do not have to pay federal income tax on. And that is something that, over the years, has become a very important facet of our practice. These laws have become complex in large part because of, over the years, there have been attempts by various parties to utilize these in a way that is harmful to the government in terms of over issuing more bonds necessarily, reinvesting the money at a profit. Today, that's not possible. Investment rates are so low, it's hard to believe that that was the case, but then sometimes it does. When investment rates are high enough, you can actually borrow at a rate that's less than what you can reinvest them. That's what's that term you heard, arbitrage. Arbitrage is the ability to invest at a greater rate than what you're paying. And obviously, in a, in a one world, you say, well, let's borrow all we can and simply invest all this money and generate these profits. Well, the government, this is a subsidy that the federal government provides. If it's overdone, it's a cost of treasury. So they curtail that, and over the years, the laws have become very complex in trying to plug various holes that various ingenious people have come up with to try to take advantage of that situation. So we give the opinion that accompanies the bonds, that they're valid and forcible under state law, and that the interest that the bondholder receives are free of federal and state income tax. That opinion goes with the bond, and is attached to the prospectus and is relied upon by the bondholders. The solicitor in the district is also expected to render a legal opinion. Similar types of issues, not necessarily the tax issues, but other issues regarding the situation with the district, the signing and conduct of the meetings, and all sorts of things are all within the purview of that opinion. So it's a team effort, and that's what, you know, these are the results you get. And I have to second what Mr. Shear said, these are, it's one of the highest percentages I can recall, maybe the highest percentage of savings in a transaction like this. So I guess you could either be incredibly good or incredibly lucky. I think in this case, you're probably both, because you obviously impressed the investors and the underwriters, and you hit the market just where it had to be. So congratulations on that.
Okay, are there any questions for our bond counsel? None appearing, is there any commentaries or opinions on the motion? Mr. Urshon?
Just thanks for a job very well done to the financial team, very welcome.
I want to make sure the principal amount of the resolution is correct. Anyone else? All right. Okay, Mr. Collins, I just want to make sure that the, the motion you have in front of you, and you mentioned the number.
It needs to be changed to nine million, five hundred thousand.
And that number was only finalized this morning, so. And that would be a second change, is there any objection from the maker of the motion or the second or to change the number to nine hundred, nine million, five hundred thousand? All right, so the motion will read that the East Penn Board of School Directors authorized refunding of this general obligation bond, Series A, of two thousand and six, in the original, the aggregate principal amount of nine million, five hundred thousand dollars dated as of December fifteenth, two thousand and six, as set forth in the attached resolution, and the attached resolution is this.
Yes, sir.
Piece of paper. No other comments appearing, this virtual, you call the roll, please.
Mr. Urshon?
Hi.
Mr. Rose?
Hi.
Ms. Donches?
Hi.
Ms. Fuller?
Hi.
Mr. Palacano?
Hi.
Mr. Bother?
Hi.
Mr. Stoltz?
Hi.
Ms. Hyde?
Hi.
Mr. Ballard?
Hi.
Nine i's.
I want to thank again, as Mr. Urshon said, our financial team, our financial management in Rosenstein, and all the people who've worked so hard in the business office to work with them to get this funding approved. As I said, so far, we've always been happy to see you, and we want to continue that trend. Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, now we come to one of the major issues of the evening. We will be discussing the budget index resolution. Let me say that we're going to have Dr. Seidberg and the financial team here to present a before we put the motion on the floor, but that the process is, is that this resolution, as stated, would lock the district into a budget that would be at the index or less. And therefore, if you wish to not lock the district in, you have to defeat this motion. And if you want to lock the district in, you have to approve this motion as it comes up. That's the way it is on the agenda. So now we will have the administration's presentation on this budget index resolution. Mr. Ballard?
Yes, Mr. Seidberg. Thank you. Just one clarifying point, this doesn't lock the budget into an index. It locks the district into increasing, it cannot have an increase in any tax rate above one-point-seven percent. That's not one-point-seven percentage points, but it's a one-point-seven percent increase in any rate.
Right, and there's only one rate we can raise, which is the property tax, and the property tax is the one that would be raised if we went above the index.
Correct.
Dr. Seidberg?
Thank you, Mr. Ballard, and all due respect, I would ask that the board, in your leisure, really peruse the document prepared by Mr. Shear and his associates, and certainly want to draw your attention to page two of the, I guess, rationale of how we are financially. And I do say with some pride that I'm very happy that our bond rating maintained its very competitive level, and I think, I want to thank Mr. Shear and staff for recognizing the, I think, quality efforts we've made in doing a good job in the financial arena. I would like the board to pay close attention to on page two, where the statement is made that our tax base is stable at this point. Well, I'm going to talk about a couple moments that we have to pay attention to, a phenomenon that is going on. And then I know last year, there was some concern in some portions of the community that people thought we were carrying a lot of debt. I think if you look at debt levels, we remain manageable. Moody's states very clearly, Moody's believes that the district's debt burden, a portion of which consists of variable debt, a rate debt, is below average, and I think, again, by accepting the bond sale today, this puts us in a good financial situation. And maybe I'll start with looking at something that we've talked about here in generalities, but I certainly want the board to understand, moving forward, a phenomenon that is not only occurring in East Penn, but throughout, I think, the whole state. And I think if you really read comments from superintendents of Board of Education, I'm not complaining about this, but I just want to direct your attention to a real issue. That is, what is the impact of reassessments going on in this community? And I think, this is current, this is up to date, right, Mrs. Sertival?
Yes.
And I think there are some coming around.
Yep.
We need to give the assessment reduction.
Assessment reduction.
The one that.
Oh, sorry. There should be more going around. I'm sorry. Here we are. Excuse me. A lot of papers to cover. And again, last board meeting, I gave you a chart, which basically documents over a period of time that the state, for whatever reason, again, I'm not disputing it, just the sheer statistics, sorry, that the state has contributed less for the overall funding of education in Pennsylvania. I don't think anyone can dispute that. Last year, the total we lost in state aid, overall, was close to two million dollars. And by looking at what's going on in the world of reassessments, I think if you look at the last number, eight-hundred-sixty-two-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars, this is the amount of money that has, that the district must refund for people who have been, or for organizations that have been successful in seeking redress and lowering the taxes they're paying. Again, not necessarily complaining about it, but when you look at the big picture, that's two things that we have to deal with, state aid and reassessments. I think last week, when Mrs. Sertival reviewed, gave you the overview, there are a couple things that I would like to, with all due respect, remind the board and the public of. Exceptions are part of Act One, they are legal. They're not some kind of hocus-pocus move. They are. And if you look at our history, and I think Mrs. Sertival went over that with you, in the early years of Act One and Exceptions, this district chose not to do them, simply because at this time, or at least in December or January, when we present. Simply because at this time, or at least in December or January, when we presented the preliminary budgets, we felt confident that we could offer a quality education within the means of that. Two years ago, we asked you, or we didn't ask you, we had an index of 4.1, and our budget came in at 3.24%. So, without using the Exceptions, this district, I think, demonstrated restraint in spending, and we spent even under the index. What I'm trying to do is paint a picture of responsibility. Two years ago, we sought Exceptions, and we qualified for over 5%, and we reduced that, and our budget down to 3.85%. And last year, again, the Exceptions that we sought were approved by the State Department, total 4.9%, and we used only a small fraction of that. The index was 1.4 last year, we wound up a budget of 1.83. So, over the history of Act One, I think this district has done well in managing its resources and offering a quality education, at the same time, trying to be fair to the students we serve and to the taxpayers. And again, this year, if the board votes this resolution down, that gives us, in my little opinion, some time and some flexibility to look at a lot of situations. And I have to say this, with all due respect, the two areas that we're most concerned about are PERSs and Special Ed, none of which we control. Special education is based on individual IUPs, written for students, agreed by parents, handled in a very confidential way, but nonetheless, as I've articulated many times this year, as Mrs. Picari just informed me, our student populations, in every category of prison in East Penn, and we expect that our student population in special education is going to increase this next year just by looking at the amount of students we had in early intervention. I think we, at some point, told you that our autistic population has increased to 93% the last four or five years, an incredible amount. And so, I'm very concerned. At the same time, I mentioned, we don't anticipate the state increasing flow-through monies to fund special education. And even last week, we got sort of a spreadsheet calculation that with Congress, the current resolution for the budget running out, and if Congress doesn't do something about it, we're looking at a cut of 1.5% in existing funding for special education. And that would translate to $25,000 less this current year, not next year, this current year. And again, it's going to put pressures on other budgets. So, in looking at Act One, over the years, I think this district has used restraint in using Exceptions. And if you look at our history, we have used the time to look at a lot of factors that we don't have total information on right now. We have used the flexibility to look at alternate forms of funding, and I think we've used that time wisely. And since I've been here, we have not used the full value of Exceptions. So my recommendation at this point would be for the board to allow the administration to at least begin the time and flexibility to deal with this. Now, the known are history, and that we've been responsible, and I think we, as administrative team, have produced budgets, some may dispute, but by and by, I think we've done a pretty good job in doing what we have to do. But, again, I want to reiterate, at this point, what are the unknowns? What are the things that, besides PERSs and Special Ed, which we don't control, what am I concerned about? Well, as I mentioned last time, the CPI is now running at about 3.4%. 3.4%, you may say, "So what?" Well, we still have to buy materials, we still have to buy supplies, we have to get textbooks, we have to get classroom materials, and we can anticipate a larger increase in those supplies than we've had in the past. And again, I want to remind the board, with all due respect, that this year's budget spends less money than we did last year. And we have been, we have been constricting discretionary funding. But at some point, we're going to have to give our principals a little bit of flexibility to do some catch-up work. I also am concerned about local revenues. As mentioned, we are now moving in January to a new collective for EIT. As Mr. Ballard said last week, I don't know if I expect a drop-off, but we may have some problems in cash flow and collection rates. Not in the end, but certainly could impact our cash flow and our collection rate. The other unknown is real estate taxes. We've done well the last year, but again, with reassessments and no discernible positive movement in any new developments, any new commercial or industrial entities, at this point, I don't know. Mrs. Surtivol's done some calculations, we feel pretty positive about that. But again, with additional time, who knows? We could do more analysis, we could talk to some more people, and perhaps we can make adjustments. Just not confident at this point. Again, a wild card is state aid. I don't want to be redundant, what's in the past is in the past. There's no doubt about it, we lost $2 million in state aid, no matter how you cut it, no matter what you totaled up. We don't know. We've included a 2% increase in state aid here, some other districts have not. I think we're trying to be optimistic. But again, we have no idea. I know some folks have concerns about some of the legislation that's going on. I have concerns about all legislation. And again, since I've been the superintendent of Pennsylvania, I went away for a while, but the issues for us are still the same. And, again, not so much that we're anti-choice, it's just that we want choice funded fairly. And I just want to review some things with you regarding cyber charter schools again. And this is the same thing I've been talking to our local legislators about. I think, since I've walked in this district, and I know when I was superintendent of Abengro, that we try to convey to the leadership in Harrisburg at the same time. Puriously enough, the Order of General has come out this week with another report, in essence, strongly advising legislature to take a look at how cyber charter schools are funded. He's come up with a calculation, maybe it's accurate, maybe it's not, but this calculation is $3,122 per student. Folks, that would mean a decrease in cyber charter school payments of $390,000. One of the things that we've been asking legislators to do is look at our own programs. We've been able to enact a program for $4,200, a very successful, very challenging, very rigorous program. At the same point, for those families who have chosen to leave the district, we're paying $8,845 a student. And a major issue, nine out of 11 cyber charter schools this year, again, did not make AYP. So what we're saying, and what we're pressing the legislature, and I hope people will join with us, if the district is offering choice, why not let that be the choice? If we kept our contributions at $4,200 per student, that would mean a savings of $729,000. And if we look at the reverse or vouchers, and say that, well, in a voucher bill, it simply says, if a parent has a student failing school, you're getting a voucher to leave, our voucher's worth about $2,600. And my thinking is, well, if a parent wants to put a kid in a failing cyber school, why not then give them a voucher for $2,600? If that's the case, that would save us almost $1 million, $926,000. So I think those are the kind of things that I think all of us need to press the legislature on for them to see that this has been out of whack for a long time, and hopefully, if we do take some time, maybe, maybe, we can have an impact in some legislation and at least lower those costs for cyber charter schools, which I think universally have been criticized by most people in the public education as being inherently unfair. And again, I'm so pleased that the Order of General has come out with their recommendation. So in summary, I think, number one, our history is good. I think we've been responsible in using the time that we would gain to look at flexibility, to look at alternate ways of funding, to come up with some creative solutions. Our history has been good. I went through a budget pre-primer. I'm also cautious in telling you that the same, at the same time, the sum of the savings we were able to enact last year that we simply, physically, cannot do this year. So, in some regards, that budget of less spending this year is going to restrict us a little bit in the way we look for cuts. So, with that, Mr. Ballard and the rest of the board members, our recommendation is that the board, with all due respect, give us the time and flexibility to build a budget that is truly reflective of the needs and not dealing with the unknowns that we would have at this point in time. Thank you.
In other words, your recommendation is to not pass the resolution?
That's correct.
That's on the.
Vote it down.
All right. Now first, we'll have to start with somebody who wishes to push this motion onto the floor. Have someone wish to make this motion?
Somebody.
Somebody second it?
Second.
All right, we will now have discussion on the motion, which basically states that, as is written here, that the East Penn Board of School Directors will stay within the index for its budget preparation for the next budget cycle. Commentary. Anyone wish to speak? Mr. Urshott?
Anyone else? I have a few concerns about, not about what the district is doing, but about the environment we're going into. As we've heard in the federal government, as Dr. Seidenberger mentioned, there's quite a bit of uncertainty about funding for next year, what the federal government is going to do. Now, federal funding is a fairly limited part of our, direct funding is a fairly limited part of our budget. We do get some pass-through funding through the IU, it could also be affected by that for special education. I'm especially concerned about the state budget picture. Governor Corbett, during his election campaign, pledged that he would not increase taxes under any circumstances, period, end of discussion. If he holds to that, there's going, there are going to be budgetary pressures the state faces. For example, the PERSs costs. We've talked about that before, Mr. Hamel brought that, I believe it was, last week. We have a number of increases coming, the state shares those payments 50%. They can't get out of that, they can't just decide, "Well, we're not going to pay." Well, I guess they could decide they're not going to pay the 50%, but, you know, regardless, they're going to be under a lot of financial pressure as well. And if they have escalating costs there, they may well decide to cut the basic education subsidy. Or is that part of the basic education subsidy, the pension payments under PERSs, or is that?
No, no, that's separate.
So that's separate. So they may cut the basic education subsidy in order to fund the pension obligations. We've seen no increase in special education funding for, I think, three years straight now from the state. I don't see that they would reverse that trend. So, with those headwinds we're going into, we don't know what the federal government funding situation is going to be. We have no idea what the state funding obligation will be. We know that pension costs are going to increase. If the Seventh Generations Charter School moves forward with their plan to add another grade to their program, I think they're up to fifth grade now, or sixth grade now?
Sixth grade.
So if they add a seventh grade for the next school year, that could potentially increase our charter school payments. We know special ed costs have continued to escalate. When I got on the board, I think special ed costs were about 7.5% of our budget. I think they're close to 12% now, maybe a little higher than 12% of our budget in the neighborhood. So it's, those are tremendous pressures, and at this point, I would certainly prefer to see a budget with no tax increase. Failing that, I would prefer to see a budget with any kind of tax increase within this rate. But I recognize that without, at this point, we don't know what we're facing as far as revenue. We do know we're coming into some fairly significant cost headwinds. I just think we need to give the administration the flexibility to apply for Exceptions and then use them as they justify, rather than cutting significant programs. The cuts in years past were a little unpleasant, they were quite uncomfortable for this current school year. I know some of the programs that my children have enjoyed in the past were eliminated. And that's, that is not fun to experience for anyone. And when you start eliminating the so-called easy programs, middle school band camps and some of the other things, well, those may seem easy to eliminate, but they have a real impact on our students. What comes next? And that's where the real concern is for me, that if we tie the district's hands, we may end up having to make some very unpleasant decisions about core curriculum areas that we need to cut, or intentionally forcing elementary class sizes substantially higher than they are now. I'm not willing to tie the district's hands at this point, and I'm willing to give them the ability to seek Exceptions and then justify to us why they think we need them. And I'm certainly willing to consider those, so I think we need to vote no on this tonight.
Mr. Ballard, get it?
I'm sorry, I forgot my chicken scratch here in my notes. One other major wild card that concerns me, I think, when we took the time to start looking at class size this year, we start to show, demonstrate some increases in class size at particular levels. Some of the early grades in elementary, at least some of the, I think, grade six at the middle school level. And one of the things that you need to know is that later on in March, we've moved up our kindergarten registration date to get a better handle on. And as you know, there was a large differential this year between first grade and kindergarten. So we're going to have to do a better job of getting the word out and seeing if there are many families who are wanting, who will be moving here from full-day kindergarten programs also to come to first grade. And at the same time, by moving up our kindergarten registration, we'll have a pretty good idea. And I think we have pretty good statistics over a period of time to predict, with some degree of reliability, what our kindergarten population would be like. So, again, our enrollment is going up ever so slightly, but nonetheless, by giving us some more time, we'll be able to see a more defined pattern over a period of time. Apologize about that slip.
Ms. Fuller?
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. This is the first of, Mr. Ballard, this is the first of, what, three votes on the budget? I'm correct?
Well, it depends on how you count them.
Yes.
There will be one in January for the proposed preliminary budget, there will be one in May for the preliminary budget, the real preliminary budget, and there will be one in June for the final budget.
So this is really the first of four votes?
Yes.
So, so this vote tonight, if we vote to exceed the Exception, really just helps us set the framework and parameters of where we may go. It does not set where we must go. Is that correct?
Well, that's more than correct. You can have any kind of budget you want by the end of June.
So simply voting to exceed the Exception tonight just gives the administration flexibility to craft a budget that is better suited to the district.
Just a point of correction, we're not voting to exceed the.
Right.
We are voting to apply for Exceptions.
We are.
Not even, not voting to do that, we're just saying. All you're doing is saying, we're not absolutely saying right tonight, that we are not going to exceed the index.
Thank you for, thank you for the clarification. But this simply helps us set the framework of where we may go to best suit the needs of the district and the students and the taxpayers. Because, again, the quality of education sets the standard for the district and sets the quality of our housing market. So, I would be very happy to vote against this resolution to allow us to preserve the quality of education that has served my science well and has continually deserves the students of the district.
Thank you, Ms. Fuller. Other comments?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, could you sort of wave a hand or something like, yeah, go ahead.
You mentioned that you're moving up the kindergarten date, I didn't catch when the early.
We used to do this in April, we do it in March now.
So what, per point in the budgetary process, we have two votes after that?
Yes.
We might have two votes before.
Right. And one of the things that. And one of the things that we'll do, and one of the things that, that our staff does, lots of people, every principal's involved, Mrs. Campbell, Mrs. Noack will do a wonderful job, Dr. Torma. We sit down and, like Dr. Torma, will have loads of meetings, and Mr. Pepperon will be excited to know they're coming. Meetings on staffing. He's laughing right now. Those are something more interesting conversations we have during the year. And we look, by then, Mr. Crepperon and his staff will have done student selections. The students will pick the courses that are interested in, will have more data, and then we can see what, for instance, how many sections we may need in a particularized area and what staffing do we have available to serve those students. We'll do the same with middle schools. And we'll take a look at that. And then we'll sit down with every elementary principal and look at potential staffing options. And on top of that, then I'll have to work with Mrs. Picari, and we'll have to take a look at what we see coming on the horizon. And she'll have better information then from the IU about early intervention, which is something, when a, when a child comes to those early intervention programs, it's always known about it that the implemented IEP has stated. And she was kind enough to give me a heads up, kind enough is not the word I might be referring, but giving me a heads up that, that, what, 15% more kids in early intervention? And again, we don't, we don't, those aren't kids that we select, those are kids we have to serve. And so when I hear that, that makes it all the more difficult in terms of what staffing needs. We may have interns, speech therapists, OT, PT. I know someone asked a question the other day, do we have to serve OT and PT? Yes, if that's stated in the child's IEP. So we're going to look at all those supplemental, all those related services, and that's the kind of thing we have to do, and that, and that is dicey. Because the last couple of years, I think we've had to add special ed staff sometime in August. And again, what we're starting to see, and again, I don't want to sound as a negative, but special ed is starting to creep into our ability to handle regular education. It's just the way it is. So we'll, we'll have, we will have done that. But I think it's important for our two board members to know that. That's what we do just about every day. We look at those. I'll be with Mr. Glancy, he'll tell you. He has the rope around to show you that. One of the things I continually ask him to do is, can't we save more on energy? And so far, we've, we've done a pretty good job of that. We'll look at principals' budgets. Look at last year, we did a lot with green computing. We saved a lot of money. But this year, I'm going to take a look at even more of what we're using in copying paper. And, and not just the bulk of paper being used, but what are we using in the paper for? Those kind of questions, which we need to probably get into at a deeper level this year. Last year, we just made a generic, found a calculation, I think we saved close to 20,000 bucks, Mrs. Sertewal, on green computing, about that last year. So I don't know if we're going to have that. We, we may save some on paper, but I can't give you a point. That's not going to be a budget saver or a budget breaker, but those are the kind of things we do. And then, Mrs. Sertewal had some good news on benefits, but we still need to go back and calculate what those benefits might be on people. And then the other thing, which I haven't, what we talked about, is retirements. Last year, we knew we were going to have a significant amount of people retiring at all levels in the organization. That's not the case this year. It was only about two teachers that made appointments, talking to Mrs. Keeler. And I think I already mentioned that last year in our budget presentation, that we're not going to have the sheer numbers of people leaving, and there is a differential, so. But again, in a couple of months, we'll know what those numbers look like. And hopefully, there'll be some folks who will retire, there'll be some opportunities for differentials, but at this point, I don't have that, that information.
Okay, Mr. Stoltz?
I have a number of questions, several of which we'll be covering, around the week covered the last meeting, but just, I want some of that on public record and much my chagrin. I did leave that piece of paper in my car, so I'm not going to run out to you. Grant, that, that's all right? Because the public doesn't have that document anyway. Mr. Ballard, sincerely expert on these things, how many different possible exceptions were there prior to legislation passed last year?
Well, in, in actuality, there were approximately 10. But some of those were absolutely useless because one of them was stated in terms of health insurance premiums for contracts that were signed before the bill, and that any ones that were signed after the bill could not qualify for the exception. And essentially, by the time the bill became effective, most of the contracts that had those things in them had also become ineffective, so nobody was able to apply for health benefit exceptions. And there were court-ordered ones that were only in response to court orders, which were also taken out of the bill. So essentially, there were, there were probably five out of the 10 that were useful.
And how many are remaining?
Three.
So essentially, they took out the ones that no one ever used and just left the ones that everyone uses fairly regularly? Or at least has the ability to use fairly regularly?
They took out the construction one, which was one of the ones that people were using. So that was one of the ones that people were using. So it's, it's sort of a mixed bag of the two they left behind.
It sounds like Harrisburg, as usual, were saying we're doing something, and it looks like we're doing something, but we're not really doing much at all. Following that, they also in the budget eliminated our charter school reimbursement?
Yes.
Which was something that was discussed on the patch back in the... That makes it significantly harder for those of us who do support school choice to defend it, although there's still arguable sayings, but we'll get to that later. I would, as we've all called for Harrisburg to do various things, I would call on Governor Corbett and the Republicans who control the House and Senate to make it easier for those of us who defend school choice by restoring the charter school reimbursement to East Penn and the other schools. The wording of the law or the bill was that they could reimburse us up to 30%, correct?
Yes.
Well, they should fulfill their word and reimburse us that 30%. Now on to the, shall we say, other side of this. Last year, we had the, our various collective bargaining units take the pay freeze, correct?
The correct phrasing of this was that the employees volunteered to take a wage concession.
No one can answer this question. I guess you'll have to direct that since I have to address you, Mr. Ballard. What will the cost increase to our overall budget be as far as salaries go because we don't have the pay freeze for this fiscal year?
We have a partial pay freeze this year, and that would have to be something coming out, I think, out of the business office. Do we have a number for how much the salary schedule is increasing because of contractual requirements?
We don't have that number readily available, but if you look at the document that was given to you, you can see what the increase is. And if there was pay freeze, obviously, there would be no increase.
And what, how, what is the amount of the increase?
For total salaries? $1.3 million.
And I, this question will probably be directed at you. If we apply for exceptions, what will the total probable amount of money that we'll be able to raise taxes by leave for the exception? Not over and above the 1.7%?
Like 1.3 million?
Year.
Are you asking for the percentage or the amount or what?
Amount.
Right.
The exceptions, I would expect to generate $1.3 million.
And what was the salary amount again?
Also about $1.3 million.
Interesting.
But then that doesn't take into account the benefit...
Right.
Costs.
Well, then I would call on our collective bargaining units, and they would have to volunteer to do this because there's nothing we can do, to show that they were not just creating an election year issue with this, but that they're truly interested in what's in the best interest of the taxpayers and the children in East Penn, and volunteer to take a pay free, a full pay freeze again this year. Again, nothing we can do to enforce that, but that would be my request, and I will be voting to stay within the 1.7%. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stoltz. Well, not appearing at the moment, I will make my comments. I'm not particularly interested in tax increases myself, but I have to point out that I am a process person. And the process that we're being forced into, especially this year, is just outright dumb. We're being asked to cast our, particularly with this resolution, cast our budget in concrete before anybody has even told us where the concrete is to pour. And we are being asked to make a possible freeze of our spending allocation before the governor has even written the first word of his budget address, knowing where he intends to take it, which is only a promise to begin with. And then we're down the path until May, and we still may not know what we're physically going to get from the state in order to fulfill our budget. So I'm against this motion from the standpoint that I don't think our hands should be tied in any manner this early in the process because we have so many other things that we have to consider. One particular special education student could cost the district $400,000. There have been those kinds of students that have suddenly shown up on our doorstep. Special education is one of the exceptions just because of that, because some of the things are totally unpredictable. So why we wouldn't want to apply for the special ed exception when we already know that we're exceeding the, the costs of special ed from last year is also a concern. And voting in this motion might feel good from a feel-good, touchy-feely political standpoint, but that then increases the chance that my fellow board members will have to make painful program cuts based on your votes without knowledge of where we're going to go with the, the whole state budget. Because locking in this early means we've got to start right now making plans for program cuts because right now, the index will not sustain the increased expenses of the district due to just basically inflation. So unless we can find some additional state aid, unless, you know, we're getting some more generosity from the state, we'll have that problem. Then also, we have problems on the revenue side. Because only 60% of our revenue total is generated by the property tax, a 1.7% increase means we can only increase revenue by 1.02%. A 1.2, I've got to do this, 1.24%? I mean, it is not one for one. We don't get 1.7% increased revenue because we have the ability to raise property taxes 1.7%. So we have only a percent or so of revenue increase, and we're talking about already knowing that we have assessment reductions that are beginning to approach a million dollars in and of itself. And I remind you of a couple of things. One, that, that's a two-pronged hit in the first year because not only do we have to refund money to these people this year out of this year's budget for last year's collected taxes, but the amount that they are paying is also now decreased in perpetuity. So they are paying less, so our revenue is going to go down for the foreseeable future in all of those buildings, and we have to refund this year. So we already have some hits there. We know that the real estate market is soft. We know that earned income is soft. We know all of our revenue streams basically are, are low at this point. And so to handcuff ourselves right now by going into some, freeze it at this value resolution is basically ready, fire, aim, and shooting us to ourselves in both feet. We want to get to the point where we know what our revenues are. We want to get to the point where we know what our expenses are going to be in a lot better shape than before we freeze ourselves into a position like this. So I will be voting against this motion. Is there any other commentary before we take a vote? Remember, oh, Mr. Ernshaw?
Now, just from a process standpoint, my understanding of this, I appreciate the administration correcting me if I'm misremembering. If we vote yay on this resolution tonight, that, that's it. We don't have to worry about anything else until we start having our regular budget, budget discussions in the March timeframe. And that means that you would have a budget that would have a tax increase of no more than 1.7%. If we vote no on this tonight, then we would get the chance, then the administration would bring back to us a recommendation on whether or not to seek exceptions and which exceptions to seek, and an estimate of what the district thinks those exceptions might be worth. Then we would approve or disapprove that. And if we would approve it, we would make that application to the state. The state may or may not approve it, and they may or may not approve it in the amounts that we expected. Is that, am I, if I'm, I'm right?
I think there's a mechanic in there. I think we will actually do an approval of a proposed preliminary budget by January 25th, which would contain the statement that we would be applying for exceptions.
All right, okay. Yep, that, that would be the next step, wouldn't it? All right, so we would, we would come up with a, a budget, a preliminary proposed budget?
Proposed preliminary proposed, whatever.
A, a very primordial budget. How about that? So, so we would have a budget with, with a lot of guesses built into it, several months away from, from where it would actually take place. We would approve that budget. We would have to approve a budget of some kind at that point. And then we would decide whether or not to seek exceptions. We would apply to the state. If we do decide to seek exceptions, the state may or may not give them to us, and would, if they give them to us, they'll set the rate, which may or may not be what we calculate. We did calculate it correctly last year. So kudos to the business office for that. And then we would still go in the Marchable timeframe to start talking about the regular budget discussions.
The real budget.
The real budget discussions, but with different parameters on how much a tax increase, the maximum tax increase we could seek.
We would have several things. We would have what was the budgets being proposed, the tax increase to support that budget. We would have the amount of exceptions we were approved for. We would have the total amount of exceptions we could seek. And those numbers are all different because as we proved in the past, we have had numbers for approvals to seek that we have not gone up to.
Right. So, so really what we're setting tonight is the maximum property tax increase and whether or not we are going to enter into the accelerated budgetary process. Because if we vote no tonight, we automatically go into the accelerated budgetary process. If we vote yes tonight, we go in the regular budgetary process. Is that fair statement?
Reasonably close, yes.
All right. So a, a yay vote limits the tax increase to no more than 1.7%, but does not require us to have any tax increase of any particular amount, it just sets a maximum increase and determines the budget schedule from here on out. Thank you. Ms. Halliwell?
I'm going to make this quick and short. This isn't an easy decision for anyone, I think, on this board because I think we can agree that we don't want to put an extra burden on the taxpayer. With that said, I think last time, we could have stated within the index, but I think it was because of the great job that our business office did, you know, Dr. Seidenberger, what you did, we constantly kept us updated with everything. And we got it to the point where, you know, most of us would have been really, really happy with. And so people can understand a little bit of processing, maybe what the board goes through. Usually when we get our packets, we all read over it, and we kind of have an idea in our head right away what we're going to do. By Saturday, that totally changes because we're reading it again, we're making decisions. Sunday, I know I pray on it. I come into these meetings kind of without, with, which way I'm thinking about going, but I listen to a lot of people and I listen to a lot of comments. So I think a lot of us are unique in that sense that we listen to each other, we kind of play off each other and try to figure out what is the best for our education system as well as our tax... as well as our taxpayers. And that's why this isn't an easy decision for any of us. This is very hard for me to say because I ran onto two very important things, education and lower taxes. And tonight, I am willing to, as Mr. Ballard said, not tie the hands of the school district, but I am please imploring everybody on this board, if it's possible, to stay within the index. Please do that. And when we have that time, when we're going over our budget, and if it's a possibility, I really want everybody to kind of vote in a certain, and think in a certain direction that if we're, we can do it with education and taxpayers. So that's my little spiel. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hyde. Anyone else before we take the vote? Okay, Ms. Bertschel, will you call the roll? Remember that an aye will pass this resolution and a nay will defeat it.
Ms. Fuller.
Nay.
Mr. Earnshaw.
Nay.
Mr. Rhodes.
Nay.
Mrs. Donches.
Aye.
Mr. Pollock.
Aye.
Mr. Barker.
Nay.
Mr. Stoltz.
Aye.
Ms. Hyde.
Nay.
Mr. Ballard.
Nay.
Six nays and three ayes.
All right, then the administration will proceed ahead to devote, develop a proposed preliminary budget and syndications of what exceptions we would qualify for and which we may need to propose for the budget. And that will be presented, I believe, at the January 23 meeting. January 23 meeting. That will be possible because we only, that's two days away from the deadline when we have to pass it. Okay, that will be the process. You'll be getting information as things develop and as things are available before that, but count on that issue being a primary goal of the January 23 meeting. All right, now we proceed to the report of the superintendent of schools, Dr. Seibert.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. I'd just like to editorialize a little bit. Thank you for the time and flexibility, but I would invite the board to join with me, and I'll prepare, I'll prepare a spreadsheet for you right after the holidays if you would back some of my proposals, as Mr. Stoltz said, if you would ask the governor and legislature to reinstate the 30% reimbursement for charter schools, and if you join with me in capping, capping charter school costs, that would be about $1.6 million, and that would be even better, 1.3, someone suggested. But that's something we can work on together. Okay, we've got a couple of questions on the speech therapy services contract. We have some changes, and Attorney Fisher's going to blow it, doesn't want to get to the agenda. Just let me remind folks that the main reason, or ask you to approve this contract is because we have two speech therapists now out of maternity slash family leave, and we still need to provide services for students. And we want to get those kids served because what we don't want to do is run up bills for compensatory education, which is a little bit more expensive during the summer. But nonetheless, if we don't provide services in timely fashion, we still are obligated to provide in those compensatory hourly rates a little more than what we want to pay. You've got a letter in your packets that is going out there with the district. It's listing our emergency bus routes. There's changes. The list of stops has been updated now to include every new development in the district. And we also have a Plan B. And really, debriefing with our staff this year, we've had an inordinate amount of times that we've had flooding in two areas, Spring Creek Road, Indian Creek Road. So Plan B will be impacted. I've asked Mr. Moen to develop a cheat sheet for me so that if we implement Plan B, my alert now message only goes to a designated portion of parents rather than waking everyone up at 5:30. I can only wake up those who are impacted by those changes. And the one thing that we're going to do a little differently, though, and again, I hope everyone can appreciate, it's been a nightmare trying to communicate changes on an hourly basis. When we implement Plan B, that will be for morning and afternoon, period. We all want to say the flood waters have receded, and we're going to go pick up your kid to regular stop. That just gets a little dicey for kindergarten because we have to start, kindergarten runs around 10 o'clock, 10:30, and so when we implement Plan B, it's for all day. So, and just as we get these plans out of emails, but I think we're in a better shape to do that. And again, because of the serious nature of this, we are breaking our paper rule this year, sending it out, hard copy to every parent. We'll put it on our website, and we'll ask them to hang that emergency list somewhere in a safe area, probably on their refrigerator. Okay, I want to remind everybody, we're going to ask you to vote on enter not today. I think Mr. Glancy will open up with you last board meeting. Again, by shifting vendors, this will allow us to save $56,669 over a three-year period. In addition, we're going to be getting real-time meters, which is another $50,000 value, and I think, again, that's a testament to the kind of work that we're doing to save on energy cost. Several months ago, we received a letter from Seven Generations officially asking for us to extend their charter for another five years. We have been in contact with the school. We were supposed to start a three-stage process of evaluating their current program. We were supposed to start that last Wednesday. And a three-step process, I'll just tell you about it. It's kind of simple, but we spent a lot of time with administrators from other districts. It was going to, we sent them a list maybe a month and a half ago of certain documents that we would like to review, much like a middle state. We were going to have a formal visit on the 7th of December, and then, once we reviewed the documents, once we had our formal visit, we would then develop any more questions that we would need. And Mrs. Spile, the principal, knows that, that that would have been done internally with my administrative team and her administrative team and our board members, just for clarification reasons. And then I would have come back to the board with a written report and a written recommendation that certainly we would have shared with the school. Unfortunately, that process has got to be put on hold. Without getting into too much detail, they have some problems with their building, and some of the documents we asked for, let's just put it this way, are not available at this particular time. I've had two conversations with the principal, very positive conversations, I think she would agree to that. We've offered our condolences, our sensitivity, our willingness to work with them. One of the things that we will do at the right time is have some of our maintenance staff, we'll make the offer to Seven Generations that our maintenance staff can help train their maintenance staff. We're looking for building-like issues, and I think they were very happy to get that offer. But nonetheless, we'll have to wait until we get the go from them to resume our evaluation process, and they certainly know that we may not be able to come back to a recommendation until there's a period of time in which we can see the documents and visit the school. So that process is going on, it's just interrupted at this particular point in time. I'm very excited tomorrow, of only one of two superintendents, Dave Krem being the other superintendent, Dr. Dave Krem. He's a superintendent while missing, very fine school district, Reading. We both happen to be Quitts Town State grads, and tomorrow, David and I will have an opportunity to have a long, individualized conversation with the president of Quitts Town University and the dean, and we will be meeting Dr. Angel Estio, who is the education minister of Ecuador. He's asked people at Quitts Town if they could provide two superintendents who they feel are on the cutting edge, and I'm honored to be one of two people that Quitts Town folks would ask to come. So I'm looking forward to an interesting day tomorrow with the prime, with the education minister of Ecuador. Next board meeting, we're going to be giving, presenting two energy awards that our district received. The night was not tonight, but we'll do that at the next board meeting. Also, I'm pleased to say that last Tuesday, Parkland School District, East Penn, and several other service organizations were given a $1,000 donation by the giant Foods Market Corporation in honor of opening a new building in Trenchill Town. It was a very nice ceremony, and I know Liz Neesak was happy to get the $1,000. I turned the check over to Debbie immediately, my witnesses, and I don't want she's done with it, but we can lower our budget by $1,000 now. Are you happy?
Great.
Okay, there you go. And sometimes we get, since we have new board members, when you look at conferences, sometimes you see a designation of Title II. Just let me explain what that is. That is federal money that we get, and when you see Title II, Title II only can be spent for staff development. And so we live under the guise of this organization. We use their money before ours. And so we know what parameters we can use, usually math, science, basic skills, reading skills, things like that. So we try to use our allegation, allocation of Title II monies before we use any district money to support a staff development. Thank you very much, Mr. Ballard.
Okay. In order to start discussion, I need to ask if anybody needs to have items three or four separated from item number twos so we can pull them all together. Under the superintendent's report, that is, let Mr. Ballard please separate that number four, six point four, please. Okay. We asked to have six point four separated. Does anybody need six point three separated? Not appearing to be voting on six point two and three, including the addendum. Can I have a motion to that effect, please?
Remove.
You move to second. Are there any comments on item six point two and six point three? I think the administration said they wanted to make some comments.
We do. There are some changes on the speech occupational physical therapy contract with Provide Staff, and Mrs. Pecari has worked with Attorney Fisher today. We made some modifications, minor, but some big changes.
Just very briefly, the date of the proposed contract will actually has changed from what was typed in by Provide Staff of 11/28. It will now become effective tomorrow with approval by the board. The other change, there was a clarification regarding percentage rates, the interest rate for the earlier time we made a payment, there actually was discrepancy in number and what was written. I think Mr. Becker had actually picked that up. So it's clarified that they now match a three and a half percent. Those are the changes that were made. Reminder himself. Mr. Earnshaw.
I'd just like to make one comment. It's with mixed emotions that I would vote to approve the retirement of Dr. Diabeno. She's been a part of this district ever since I've been on the board, and I value very much her, not only her professional contributions to the district, but also her really sunny disposition. She always has a smile on her face, and she always has a great way of presenting information to us. I'd like to thank her for her service to the district and certainly wish her well in her retirement, but we will definitely wish her...
Mr. Stoltz.
I'd sort of like to echo that, having actually had Dr. Diabeno as my vice principal for a year or so during, two years maybe, during my high school time here in East Penn. And I'm sorry to see her go. I think I only ended up in her office for personal reasons once. I might have stopped in to visit after that. But once again, if somebody can deal with me, then they're pretty much confident for whatever they choose to do in the future. So best wishes, and we'll miss you.
I'd like to echo that Dr. Diabeno has been able to keep her smile even during heated questions from the board about the argument she was presenting, so she should do well and retire on it. Any other comments on these two issues together? Ms. Bertschel, will you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Donches.
I'll stay and hopefully take in the conference and have an interaction.
This isn't the great payment for the conference.
Which one is?
Oh, is it? Okay. Sorry, I forgot. I thought it was under the field list. We're separating out Mrs. Donches' conference for this thing so that she can vote on the rest of the motions.
Okay. And aye.
Is that acceptable to the motioner in a second? Sure. All right, Ms. Bertschel, will you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Donches.
Aye.
Mr. Earnshaw.
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes.
Aye.
Ms. Fuller.
Aye.
Mr. Pollock.
Aye.
Mr. Barker.
Aye.
Mr. Stoltz.
Aye.
Ms. Hyde.
Aye.
Mr. Ballard.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
All right, well, now we'll have an item to do the educational conference for the PSBA workshop for new board members, for Ms. Donches. Have a motion, please.
There were three people going to that conference. Are you just moving yourself from that?
I would like to say aye, but I think...
But I believe we just removed Mrs. Donches.
Okay. I just want to be sure that the board...
But I have a motion on Mrs. Donches attending the conference. Remove. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Earnshaw.
Just to be clear, when a board member is sent to train in the capacity of their positions as board member, there is no conflict of interest in those informed that. There's no personal financial benefit for the individual unless you have a financial interest in the company that was providing the training, then you would have to abstain. But otherwise, there's absolutely nothing unethical, inappropriate in any way for voting for yourself to attend a conference in your professional capacity.
Other comments? Ms. Bertschel, will you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Hyde.
Aye.
Mr. Stoltz.
Aye.
Mr. Barker.
Aye.
Mr. Earnshaw.
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes.
Aye.
Ms. Fuller.
Aye.
Mr. Pollock.
Aye.
Mrs. Donches.
Mr. Spile.
Mr. Ballard.
Aye.
Eight ayes hold extension.
All right, now we'll have, as Mr. Earnshaw requested, the 2012-13 ASI School Program of Studies changes. I have a motion, please. Remove. Second. Discussion.
We have a presentation. Mr. Ballard. Dr. Diabeno for the last time. And who do you have with you tonight?
I have Mrs. Edmonds with me from the high school, Mr. Puparato from the high school, and Mrs. Laura Libby, who is the math department leader.
Five eight and a half. You don't have to lift me, are you? I think you need to press and hold.
I think you changed color. Here we go.
Just needed some comic relief. Good evening. My very first presentation to the board was on a program of studies, and it's funny, I think that it's my last as well. For those of you who may not even know what a program of studies is, each year, the high school gets together the high school administrators with the guidance counselors and then the department leaders, and they join me in looking at the document that our students use each year to select their courses. And traditionally, my input as supervisor for secondary ed relates to any courses that are in revision. While this year, as has been for the last three years, math has been the ever-changing content area, not because of my wish, but because the state has changed things and now the Common Core has changed things. So the purpose each year is the same, but the ballgame has changed a little bit this year. So I want to thank Mrs. Edmonds because she has really created all the changes in the documentation. She also... She also supplied for the board the document that you have in the board packet that goes through the changes. But if we can go to the next slide, we'll give you just a little bit of a history. Two years ago, when we were going through the math revision, the new tool from the state at that time was the standards align system, the SAS tool. And we thought we had it all together, because we had a representative from East Penn, Mrs. Stacy Meckus, who sat on the committee that was going through the changes to add to the SAS tool. And she came back with Mrs. Kathy Enders from the IU, and we thought we had our act together and presented to you for the board changes, everything that aligned to the SAS tool, and then found out that they changed the SAS tool in March when we were presenting in April to reflect the new updated state standards for math. And then, as you all learned this last September, when I presented to you the Common Core, yet again, the Common Core came and Pennsylvania as a state adopted them in two thousand ten, with the understanding that they would be implemented fully in two thousand thirteen, fourteen. So, what does this mean for us in East Penn? Well, if you remember back in September, the state is ninety-five percent aligned with our language arts standards. But unfortunately for the state of Pennsylvania, the state standards are only about forty-five percent aligned to the Common Core. So, we have our work set out for us, and we are transitioning. And if you remember, in September, we went through the middle level transition plan that did run into what the high school is going to have to do, and that brings us to the document that you have in your board packets. The document goes through some tweaks in language and edits for the other courses, but what I'd like to draw your attention to, and if you could take it to the last screen for me, Andrea, this attachment twelve, which I believe you have the white copy that has the highlights on it. And if you have that with you on page two, it's easier to see the highlights of that, because what Andrea did for us is she put in yellow the new wording for the math courses, and then in gray she put what would be deleted. So, it's easier to follow that way. So, all the math changes are actually on page two and run into page three. And instead of standing here reading them to you, I'm going to ask Mrs. Libby to come to the stand, and if you have specific questions related to any of the language changes for math, she is not only the department leader for the high school math department, but she also sits on the state-level Keystone Exam Committee and is our resident expert on what needs to happen to make our students ready. So, at this time, if anyone has any specific questions regarding the math changes, Mrs. Libby's going to stand here beside me.
Does anyone have any specific questions they want to ask at this time with Mrs. Libby? We don't seem to have any. Whoops. Mr. Robert.
I just have one on, of course, pre-fourteen, Algebra II. There were a lot of or and and pre-recognizers, and I didn't really understand the Algebra II concepts, whether that was an or or an and, there wasn't a.
I can do this one. It was a missed or, and because of your email, we caught it, and the document itself will have the or in it. There should be three ors in that, and there were only two. So, thank you for catching that.
Any other questions?
This is just for the math question? This is just for the math changes or for all things?
Anything.
Oh. More than math now?
Any other math question?
Math questions?
Okay. Other questions?
Other subjects besides math now?
Other subjects beside now.
Mr. Barker, do you have one?
Yes. In the science section, there's a comment that semester science electives should be restricted to grades ten to twelve only, or have concurrent against enrollment in honors biology. How is that going to be incorporated into the?
Mrs. Edmonds has that answer.
Yeah, I think I can answer that. The department chair came to us with some concerns about four elective courses and freshmen coming in, taking two courses within their freshman year that the science department felt that was a little bit too much for them, a little bit too much science oriented, and they weren't really prepared for that. So, the science department recommended the change be a ten to twelve grade elective, but if the student is taking an honors biology in their ninth grade year, and they have a sound science background, they would be able to take the courses. Otherwise, they can take other electives outside of science.
So, it's going to be, in each one of the electives, will be listed ten to twelve, and then there'll be some statement that?
Yes. The statement, after every course in the program of study, I think you have the original program of study, after every course, the grades are identified. After that, of those four courses, the statement is grades ten through twelve or concurrent enrollment in honors biology of the ninth grade.
Any other questions on other parts of the changes? Mr. Ernshaw.
I don't have questions. I have a number of comments. First of all, when I read through the course offerings, this reminds me a lot of stuff that I took as a freshman in college. The curriculum is much more challenging now for high school students than it was when, let's just say when I was younger. We won't get into the number of decades since then, or eons. Well, okay, that might be you, not me. I'm not to the eon stage yet, Mr. Ballard, and I'll let you claim that. I also was quite pleased to see that we're removing courses that really didn't seem to be meeting the needs of our students. And that's, I think that's an essential part of any curriculum process, where we look at what's working for our students and what's not, and focus our resources where they need to be. So, I compliment you for taking that. It sometimes can be hard to get rid of courses, especially ones that we've taught for a while, and they feel like a part of our culture. We don't want to give those things up so easily. The fact that you've been willing to do so is quite impressive to me, and I thank you for it. And I compliment you on the work that you've done, and I look forward to working with my children as they continue to pour over the catalog and say, I really want to take three of these, but I only have room for two. Which one should I take? Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? Unappearing. Thank you, Dr. Diabonwa. So, now I think we need to have a motion made. And there's no further discussion, Mr. Barker. All right. Ms. Bursel, will you call a roll, please?
Mr. Pollicano.
Aye.
Mr. Barker.
Aye.
Mr. Ernshaw.
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes.
Aye.
Mrs. Donches.
Aye.
Ms. Fuller.
Aye.
Mr. Stoltz.
Aye.
Ms. Hyde.
Aye.
Mr. Ballard.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
All right. The next item on the agenda is legislative. I'll try to give some background on the resolution. As you know, on your PSBA liaison with the board to PSBA, the motion that you had before you was prepared primarily by PSBA with blanks to fill in the name of the school district. There was no school district resources utilized in preparation of this particular motion, and it has been reviewed by PSBA legal counsel. So, the motion is legal. We're simply stating our opinion for our legislators, as is our right. And so, I will move that the East Penn Board of Directors approve the resolution opposing tuition vouchers, item number thirteen on the agenda. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. I will try to answer any questions, and we'll see what the commentary is. We'll see what your pleasure is. Mr. Rhodes.
Was this advertised on the website before the meeting? Was this the first?
The item was listed on the agenda as being a resolution to oppose vouchers. The actual writing of the motion was not present. The attachments are generally not included with the agenda.
They're available for anybody to call up and down.
You have to call, but we by standard procedure, we do not put it on the website because it's an attachment.
And some of the attachments aren't formulated until just before the meeting on Monday.
Was this on the board? Before the meeting?
Yes.
We've had this.
Yes, it was sent to the board members.
But the public didn't have it.
Oh, who was, who can I recognize to make comments? Mr.?
Okay, I just wanted to comment that the public didn't have it according to one of the comments made tonight, and shouldn't it be appropriate for the public to have it too?
I'll answer that question in a moment. We'll have Mr. Stoltz.
Mr. Ballard, may I assume that the reason that we're voting on it tonight is that the legislature, well, the House anyway, is likely to vote on their own version of SB one this week?
Yes.
All right. If this were specifically opposing SB one, I might support it, because I don't, for separate reasons, I don't feel that SB one goes far enough, and I have actually urged a state representative to vote against it for that reason. That being said, I happen to find this particular resolution pretty offensive, and I understand it's coming from the PSBA, and that's why I voiced my problems with them over the, particularly over the course of the campaign, at one point quoting my friend Simon Campbell, who's president of Stop Teacher Strikes, saying, "PSBA is pretty silly, mindingly awful." We're opposed, basically this resolution opposes all school choice, and it's because we are apparently afraid to compete for tax dollars. If, I don't presume to know what's best for parents and what's best for their children. Parents know better than we do. And this resolution, here, here's the line that really annoys me. Whereas the implementation of a tuition voucher program, over-expanding of any existing tax credit program, that's the EITC they're talking about, or incentivizing the students' transfer out of the public, the public education system in any way takes financial resources away from traditional public schools and diminishes the great strides, this is what gets me, diminishes the great strides that have been made in those schools and increases the burden on property tax, well, that's arguable. Property taxpayers and their resident school districts, so on. When we give money to a charter school for one of our students, it's eight thousand dollars, correct?
Eight thousand eight hundred and forty-five dollars, I believe, is the kind of.
And what are we paying, and what do we spend per student in East Penn?
How do you want to characterize it? ADM, which is what the state calculates, is supposed to be the cost of education, of just the educational portion, not counting the buildings and the transportation and the other things. So, that's supposed to be our number of what we spend for educating a child.
But an actual cost is about thirteen thousand.
Different calculation.
Right.
I don't know, some people get that number by taking the eight thousand plus students, dividing it into the budget, coming up with some number, but then we provide other services that aren't exactly educational, that are caught in that number two. So, define your number, and we'll try to come up with a number for you.
The thirteen thousand, this was being discussed back and forth on Patrick Lair today, of which you were a part of the conversation, and the figure was thirteen thousand. You didn't seem to object to that.
Well, what I said was the ADM is what we spend to educate a child.
So, I'm kind of illustrating my point, it's arguable, as to whether or not it costs us more. So, how many students do we currently have that attend charter schools?
We have a hundred and twenty-five in cyber schools and probably about another hundred and forty, hundred and forty-five, so close to two fifty, two sixty.
And that's costing how much?
Just about three million dollars this year.
I don't particularly know how the state's going to fund SB one, and I think that's the point of contention that we've had. I earlier said that I think that we should be reimbursed a full thirty percent. But I'm not going to vote for this and oppose school choice, because we can argue that charter schools are failing or they're not failing. I'm not going to make the decision as to whether or not they should be going to an East Penn school. I have no problem with us competing for tax dollars, because I think we are one of the best school districts in the county and in the state, or whether they should be going to a charter school or a cyber charter school or whatever. That's not my call, that's the parent's call. It's the parents' taxpayer dollars that are going towards sending the children to that school. I look at it this way, it's the parents', children, it's their money, and it's their school choice. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else who?
May I kindly point out that if it were the parents' tax dollars educating the child, it would be about three thousand dollars, perhaps, on a house. I made an estimate of what it cost to educate my sons in the East Penn School District, and I would still be paying if I had to achieve a pay. I figured it would have cost me out of pocket about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and in no way have, over the course of my tenure here at East Penn, have I paid that amount in school tax. So, it is not the parents' money, it is all of our money. And the reason I will support this are the words that public schools in the Commonwealth, unlike private and parochial schools, which are not required to give state assessments or publish student achievement data, and additionally, public schools have the option of rejecting children because they have filled their quota or they don't fit the profile.
Private schools have the option of rejecting students?
Yes. I'm sorry, private schools and charter schools, public schools do not. So, it is not an equal playing field. I truly feel that SB one is picking the profit of the taxpayers. I will vote in favor of this resolution.
Next, Mr. Robert.
On the earlier comments that were made, I don't see the relevancy of the charter, charter schools in this, because clearly it's talking about vouchers and public schools versus private and parochial schools, and I think charter schools are public schools.
Yes, quick.
And what's not mentioned in here, I guess I've heard various numbers, but I don't know if anyone can comment on this, but I've heard that the Senate's analysis of the SB one was that something like seventy-five percent of the money is going to go to people already attending public schools.
No, private or school.
And if that's the case, I think if they're already going there now and they get a voucher to send to that school, that is money coming out of the public school system, and the taxpayer doesn't have any benefit to show for that, because the person's already, the taxpayers as a group don't have any benefit to show for that money, because the person's already attending the private school. So, I think I will probably vote against, I'll vote for this.
All right. Let's see. Somebody who hasn't had a, Ms. Donches?
I agree with the citizens who spoke that this should have been on the website for public review. I feel that education provides opportunity, and that every child deserves, every child deserves a first-rate education, that every child deserves to be educated in a safe and nonviolent environment and in a school that is not failing, and that this resolution restricts parents from choosing a school that is safe and not failing. Therefore, I cannot support it.
Okay. I would be, Mr. Rhodes, I believe.
I have not had a chance. My turn. Thank you, Mr. Ballard. There are a number of issues around school choice that I think are commonly held fallacies. First is the fallacy that parents, under any kind of voucher program, that parents would have school choice. They don't. They have the choice to apply to send their children to any kind of private or parochial school they wish, but at the same time, those schools have the ability to say no to any parent. So, to say any kind of voucher program provides choice is not correct. Until every private and parochial school is required to accept every student who applies, there is no true choice. And I don't know, anyway, if you can argue against that, I can't see any logical way you can argue. you can argue that it's otherwise. Now, I have an autistic daughter, there's no private school in their right mind that would accept her at the same price that they would pay for a regular education student, because she requires speech therapy, occupational therapy, she has special aides who work with her. There's no way those costs would be covered by these tuition plans. So, so let's, let's stop talking about choice as a unilateral thing for parents until we make sure that that is available. The second one, of course, is accountability. One of our band leaders here at East Penn, marching band assistants, he's the woodwinds director, during his day job, he teaches music at the Meridian Academy, and I was talking to him about it during marching band season this year. He said, "Yeah, I don't have any curriculum requirements at all, I can teach whatever I want in the classroom." I said, "You're kidding, anything? You have no guidelines?" He said, "No, we're allowed to come up with whatever we want to teach, and that's the beauty of this system." And I thought, okay, that's the beauty of the system from the teacher's perspective, but again, it comes back to accountability. There is no control of any kind over what is being taught in those classrooms, no assurance that those students are being taught the standards that we expect of them. If they don't teach those children to read and write, the children don't learn to read and write. Now, parents, of course, would demand that presumably, but how many parents would feel comfortable going into a situation where the things that their child would be taught would be entirely dependent on what teacher is assigned to them? That if they get teacher A for math or teacher B for math, they're going to learn different things in different ways and come out with very different outcomes. That, that is, to me, is somewhat distressing. The whole concept that this voucher bill would provide, the kind of funding necessary, is also lacking. If we look at the top private schools in this area, the Swain School comes to mind. The last time I checked their website, their tuition was sixteen, I think it was sixteen thousand dollars per year, per student. The voucher bill won't even cover half of that for one student in the poorest district with the worst-performing schools in the Commonwealth. And we heard here tonight, according to what formulas they have in East Penn, they would get, what was it, twenty-six?
Twenty-six hundred.
Twenty-six hundred dollars. So out of their pocket, they still have to come up with thirteen thousand-plus dollars to send their, their children to the Swain School. Again, the fallacy of choice as defined by the current legislation. One of the other ones that I've heard was that parents are the ones who should judge the quality of their children's education. I've been down on the school board for ten years, I've learned a lot about what makes a quality education. I'm not sure I'm qualified to judge yet the quality of any schools, independent of any measures that can be put on it. These, this legislation does not require the students in any private or parochial schools to take any kind of standardized assessment of any kind. There's no data to say how well the students are learning or performing. I sometimes liken it to, how good is your doctor? Do you know? I mean, think about it, fifty percent of doctors graduated in the bottom half of their class. One out of every ten doctors graduated in the bottom ten percent of his class, or her class. Do you know if your doctor is a bottom ten percent or a top ten percent? Did they come from a great medical school and barely get by? Did they come from a fairly mediocre medical school and barely get by? I would argue that a doctor who barely got by at Stanford is still going to be better than someone who came out of the worst medical school and barely got by out of that. I have no way to judge my doctor's performance, I have no data available to me. We take it on faith because the doctor seems to have a good bedside manner, maybe we get care that seems to be effective, but do we know if we went to the other doctor across the street, maybe we would have been cured in half the time and half the cost? Maybe we would have had no side effects from the treatments that that other doctor might have prescribed? Or if we went across the street, that other doctor might not have been able to treat us at all? We have no way of knowing and no way of comparing. Until private and parochial schools are subjected to some kind of scrutiny, there is no rational basis for a parent to judge the quality of that education, except it feels right to me. That's a pretty big risk to take with your students when you really don't know the outcome until they enter college, twelve or thirteen years later, and by that time, it's too late. Finally, the, the question comes up sometimes of funding, what's the cost of funding a student? If we were to add one student to any one of our schools today, a student moves in, it's not going to add eight thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars, or twelve thousand, three hundred dollars, or thirteen thousand dollars to educate that student. We'll spend a few hundred dollars in books, supplies, copies, that sort of thing. We won't hire new teachers, we won't add any bus routes, we won't build a new building. The incremental cost of adding or subtracting a student is minimal. When you take the total costs of the entire system and divide it by the number of students, that's where you come up with these twelve to thirteen thousand dollar numbers. When one student leaves, I promise you, twelve thousand dollars worth of costs do not leave with that student. So if we were to have more of these cyber students, charter school students, private and parochial students come into the district, it's, we would not incur these massive costs until we reach certain thresholds. Once we have to add enough bus routes or build a new building, that's when the costs become prohibitive for adding students. The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, for better or worse, has chosen to fund public education largely out of two sources, state sources, which is primarily income and sales taxes, and local sources, which are primarily property taxes with some earned income taxes. That's what we're stuck with currently. We may not like it, it may not be the best system, I guess arguments could be made for a lot of other systems, but the idea is that it's a public priority to educate the populace. We feel, apparently, that it's better to spend that money to have an educated populace that have, who have a future than an uneducated populace who are destined for poverty. As a result of that societal priority, we've chosen to fund it largely from property taxes. So the dollars don't follow the students. The dollars are there because that is the way the Commonwealth has chosen to fund education. So if we decide to have any other mechanism for educating students, it should come out of dedicated revenue sources that are earmarked for that purpose, perhaps an increase in the personal income tax, perhaps an increase in the sales tax, perhaps some other allocation from the state level. It should not tamper with the funding formulas of the individual districts unless we want to have a much broader conversation about how we should change it. And that's why I'm very much in favor of this particular resolution, for all the reasons that I've outlined. Thank you.
Okay, someone else who has not spoken yet? Mr. Paul.
I'm trying to figure out what the purpose this resolution will, will serve. I think, it sounds like to me, there are people that will have equal appearance who oppose or against vouchers, and, and they would be, that would be right down, I have this resolution, you wouldn't have a choice. I, there are people on the board that favor vouchers, they couldn't do anything, right? Because we have one spokesperson, they can go to the.
Unlike my colleague, you.
I'm just saying, it just, this resolution sounds kind of restrictive. And I feel that, saying that it implies that, very good, the board's decision to pass this resolution says, tells Harrisburg that all of East Penn is against vouchers.
That's not what it says, but.
The implication is there, that's, that's why I'm a little paged. I mean, whether I'm for it or not, I just want to make sure that everybody has an equal say, whether your four vouchers are not in the district and we're not restricted, and even in the board, there are people that can support the vouchers and go to the legislature and say, put their percentage in, and at this moment, so, that's, I just want to make sure that, thanks.
Okay, anyone else want to speak? I'm going to give, give my perspective on it after everybody has had a chance, and then there'll be a second round, you can comment or criticize whatever, the other things, but I want to hear the basic arguments beforehand. If nobody else is wanting to do it this time, I'll sort of summarize. The reason that this is on the agenda is that there are only six more days left in the legislative agenda for this year, it would start up again sometime in late January, I believe, but that, that there's a high possibility that somebody will try to sneak through another, in the middle of the night, nobody's had a chance to read a bill to accomplish something in the voucher area, because it is a political mantra for certain, certain groups, that they need to do this. And PSBA is asking for a maximum effort to attempt to get word to legislators of the criticality of this to districts. And the thing I want to point out is that this is not a referendum on, by the people, because we're expressing the, the response of the district. You, as a board member, represent two bodies. You represent the people who elected you, and you also represent the district of which you are a part. You are a member of the district, and you have a fiduciary responsibility to the district as well as to the taxpayers, to do what's in the best interests of the district as an entity. So the question before you is whether or not vouchers, as proposed, are a good thing for the district, and you're not expressing public commentary, although I will point out that in a representative government, you were elected to be a representative of the people, not to take a poll every time somebody has an issue, find out what might be popular at the time, but you were chosen to be a representative on the basis that your thought process was representative of the people that you elected, and they, if given the same kinds of information that you're given, would make the decisions you would make. And so we don't have instant polls, we don't have clickers out in the audience, we don't okay? You're here to represent a couple of entities, one, the public, and two, the district, and sometimes you have to put on one hat or the other. This resolution is asking you to put on your district hat and decide what is best for the district as your representatives, and that's what it comes to. So there's this possibility of a vote coming up. You have a, a thought process here to go through. What is in the best interests of the district? And that's what you're expressing. It doesn't say the public feels about vouchers, although we have some polls that say sixty to seventy percent of people, when asked, don't want to give a voucher to public or private, or to me, private or parochial school with tax money, but that's a different issue. You're being asked to express the sentiments of the district as far as it affects the district operations. That's what this motion is about. Now, as Ms. Fuller has pointed out, this is not a simple parent tax dollar issue, okay? Because parents have always had choices. They can have sent and do send their kids to private schools, parochial schools, and other schools. The question is whether they get, now get tax dollars to go to the schools that they want to send their children to. And that's an equation not for parents, it's for all taxpayers to weigh in on, all of them, including ones who don't have any kids at school now or never have had, and want to know where their tax dollars are going. I could go on in, in great detail about how taxpayers are losing accountability under the system being proposed, with no testing, no auditing, no right of taxpayers to inspect records, I could go on and on, but that's not necessary. I'm only asking you to look at this from the perspective of your representative of the district, and how vouchers will affect this district. I will digress just a little bit politically from the standpoint of being a lifelong Republican, and I'll put that with a small r, because some people want to put something else associated with the big R, Republican. The last time I checked, Republicans and Conservatives of that stripe of Conservative Republicans, small c, small r, were against entitlement programs, and this is an entitlement program. Don't try to tell me otherwise, this is an entitlement program. Republicans are supposed to be about not increasing government bureaucracy, and let me tell you that this program increases government bureaucracy. Somebody has to write these checks, and somebody has to check that they've been endorsed to a school and not Joe's Corner Market, okay? This goes against the principles that I grew up with as being a Republican for my entire life, so I look at it and say, this is also taking away the idea that education is one of those things that many Republicans agree is a function of government, so that we get a uniformed education of our citizens and not a patchwork education of citizens, with some getting a certain amount and others getting much more, or any equities like that, that a well-educated citizenry will be able to see through all the political ads and see through all of the hype and other things and make rational decisions when they come to it, we would hope. And that's the promise of public education, because the public has a chance to weigh in on it. People in the audience have come up here and criticized our decisions before and after we've made them, they have that right in public schools. They will not and do not have that right in private and parochial schools, under any of this. So now your tax money is going to go to these institutions, and you don't get to say anything about it, you don't get to check on it, you don't get to have anybody else check on it, you don't get to see if the products, the staves is coming out of the public schools. We get criticized for our test scores. Well, wait a minute, we've got test scores. What about the people who don't have test scores, have deliberately opted out of being, who were given the opportunity to utilize the PSSAs and opted out of it, okay? For whatever reasons, we don't have test scores to compare to them. So now we're being asked, as I said, the process is coming down to the point where something might be crammed through, and I think public education officials, which you all are, need to take a stand about the process, and this resolution is attempting to point out the flaws in any program that's being put forward now. You may disagree with one paragraph or another, but the question is whether you disagree with the intent, and the intent is to tell legislators that from a public education standpoint, representing the district of East Penn, that the education responsible people in this district, the school board, feels that vouchers are a bad idea for the Commonwealth, and that's the sole and definite purpose of this motion and this resolution. It has no binding effect on anybody, okay? It just says, "Our opinion isn't bad." That's what it says. It doesn't force anybody to do anything or force anybody to not do anything. It doesn't change anything you're going to do as a vote on matters that come before the board that require a vote of the board to accomplish one way or another. It's simply sending a message. So in my opinion, somebody who's, who's against the way the process is going could vote for this, somebody who's against use of public tax dollars for private or parochial education could vote against this, and somebody who's looking at the best interests of the district from a financial standpoint, which we'll have to do over the next several months, could also vote for this, because all of the proposals so far are damaging financially public education. So that's my take on it. If you want to dispute that or, you know, take another tack on it, that's fine, let's go for a second round. Mr. Solz.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. As you would say, well, where do I begin? I'll start with Ms. Fuller's comment. Her assumption was that the average taxpayer in East Penn pays about four thousand dollars in property taxes a year. How much would the voucher make for an East Penn student? Twenty-six hundred, assuming it affected East Penn students, and the current bill is not correct.
No, the current bill, this is, let's back up, I'll try to get this, so, I'm not trying to interrupt you, but.
I understand.
There has been a spreadsheet put out using the formula from SB one, which is also based on the amount of money that each district gets from the state, and because we only get twenty percent or less of our money from the state, the number for East Penn, if a student in East Penn wanted to take a voucher and go to some private school, the number would be approximately twenty-six hundred and sixty-six dollars. Now, there are some schools where that number could be eight thousand, I would suspect a, a school district in the north might be one of those, and it doesn't start with P, okay? And.
There's a less than ours, by the way. It would not eighteen hundred.
But anyway, so every school district has a number. Now, of those, a hundred and forty-four are currently being labeled as, quote, "failing districts" because of their PSSA scores, primarily. districts because of their PSSA scores, primarily in larger areas, Harrisburg, Pittsburgh, and Philadelphia, are the major numbers of them. And so those are the districts that would really be affected initially by the bill.
I'm sorry. Was that one hundred and forty-four schools or one hundred and forty-four districts?
One hundred and forty-four schools.
Seventeen school districts, correct. Okay. So this is what I was saying earlier. I find this bill to be completely inadequate, and I actually agree with what Mr. Earnshaw said in part anyway, that it doesn't come close to covering the cost of, say, if you wanted to send your child to Swain School. Public disclosure, I went to Swain until eighth grade, and then I came here for high school. And it wouldn't come even close to that. So I agree with those who are saying that this bill is inadequate for school choice and probably doesn't help us any. That's not what we're voting on here, though. We're voting on vouchers as a whole. But going back to Ms. Fuller's initial point, which was that it's not parents' money. True, it's actually less than the parents' money in East Penn. About half, more or less. Moving on to Mr. Bacher's comment. You're right. I got a little caught up with my passions in this when I mentioned charter schools, but I've noticed that we frequently attack charter schools and school choice vouchers at the same time. So I felt the need to defend both of them. My apologies for confusing the issue. Mr. Earnshaw. Parents can judge whether or not a school is good by whether or not their children are coming home, learning something, or whether they're coming home dumb as a box of rocks. I mean, every parent I know thinks that their children are just wonderful, brilliant, and bright. But they also can sort of tell whether or not their children are learning, whereas our former brilliant president said his are children. I know what poll numbers are on this, and as I've heard some of you use this quote before, and I've used this as a guiding quote. A representative owes the people not only his industry, but his judgment as well. He betrays them if he sacrifices it to their opinion. Of course, that's from Edmund Burke, who was a British parliamentarian. Parents can tell whether or not their children are learning, and that's the oversight that private schools would receive should a voucher system be enforced. Whether or not this is an adequate voucher system, we can debate, but that's not what we're voting on here. By the way, you can tell whether or not your doctor's good by whether or not you're paying attention to whether or not you're getting better. If it works for you, your doctor's good for you. If a school is working for your children, that school is good for your children, and that's how you can tell. Parents pay attention to their children. It's their most precious, most important goal in life, which is why so many parents in East Penn get nervous when I talk about not raising taxes. I know they're paying attention, and I don't see why that wouldn't be true of parents who send their children to private school, particularly, as you pointed out, since they be covering some of the costs for themselves. Mr. Polakana's point about this, I think the point he was trying to make was this resolution, even if it passes, probably doesn't speak for us all. I would therefore propose the following amendment. Be it further resolved everywhere it occurs, that the majority of the East Penn School District Board of Directors and so on. That way, it reflects that it's a sense of the majority because I'm quite certain you have enough votes on this board to pass this. But it's clear that there are some of us that don't agree with it. I suppose that either needs to be put up to a second or needs to be considered a friendly motion, correct?
That's correct.
That would have to be amended, not a friendly amendment.
Okay. Well, then, I move that the wording be changed in all three places where it says, be it further resolved that the East Penn School District, be it further resolved that the majority of the East Penn School District Board of Directors.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Who was that? Mrs. Donovan?
Mrs. Donovan.
Then we will eventually discuss the amended motion. We're discussing the amended motion at the moment. If the amendment fails, we revert back to the original motion, the original form of this. Are there comments on the amended motion on your side?
I think we're just starting something here that we would almost have to put this into every document that we vote on. Trying to say I'm against it, I just think it's, most of the stuff we vote on, we don't agree on in this board a hundred percent. So I am against it.
Any others?
I was going to ask the same question. How many, when we set policy in cast, how many times have we said, specified it was only the majority rather than this is the policy of the school district?
It's opinion. It's zero is the number in my twenty years here. You got me. I know. Let's see. Mr. Earnshaw.
All right, thank you. Just from a parliamentary procedure point of view, just for people who may not realize, when we vote on the amended motion, if it passes, that will be the motion adopted. If it fails, we will revert to the original language of the motion and continue discussion at that point. Just to respond to Mr. Scholes' comment, parents may be satisfied with the education their children are getting, but they have no way of knowing if their children would have gotten a better education in another setting. You just can't. And it's the same thing with a doctor. You're getting well. Like I said, maybe you've gotten well twice as fast with fewer side effects and lower costs with another doctor. You have no way of knowing. It's true of anything. If I take my car to the shop and get it repaired, I can take it for estimates to three places, get a different number in each place, and then pick the lowest one. But do I know they're going to do the job at the same level of quality, attention to detail, with the same quality replacement parts? I don't know. I'm not qualified to judge the brands of replacement parts in such a way that I can make that assessment. So once again, you have no way to know if your children are getting a superior education, an inferior education, or an equivalent education. It's impossible to know, and the only guidance you would have is if you have some kind of standardized assessment, test scores is what we have at this point, to compare the two different schools. We have, I've spoken to a number of families. I work with some who live in the Allen County School District. There's a family there that they were delighted with the education their children received at William Allen High School. They thought it was very good, and it was great for their students to be in a really diverse population. And when they got to college, their oldest daughter struggled tremendously because she did not get as quality of preparatory education, and she had to work much harder to handle the workload and suffered in her first year, learning new study habits and new discipline. Their second son ended up dropping out of college and never going back because he couldn't handle the workload. So parental satisfaction is not the ultimate judge of the quality of an education, but the outcome can only be known at some point down the road. And that, as I've said, with no data to back it up, that's a big risk we're taking on our societal priorities to educate our children.
Thank you, Mr. Earnshaw. Other comments? I will make one comment before we go on the amended motion. To the idea that parents are the only judge of whether or not their students are becoming educated, I'm sorry, that's not true. As long as I, as a taxpayer, am paying taxes for their education, I have a say also. And I need to be assured that they're getting the quality of education that I think my tax dollars should go for, along with other taxpayers. So yes, parents have a big part of it, but they're not the only ones. The public has to be convinced that the education that they're paying for is what the public wanted to pay for and wanted to make sure that the students were getting. And so there is another component to this besides the parents. Are there any final comments before we vote on the amended motion? Mr. Scholes?
I just want to be perfectly fair. If we vote for it at this point, it's not voting whether or not to amend it, it's voting whether or not to pass it as amended.
That's correct. I guess I'm not voting on it.
We're voting on amended.
Well, you can do it either way. We're voting on the amended motion, and the amended motion includes the words about the majority of the East Penn Board's school directors. That is a motion in and of itself. If that motion fails, then we vote on the original motion, which does not include those words. But if that first one passes, then that's the motion to pass, and we don't go back to the other language. Mr. Earnshaw?
If I could clarify, in, under Robert's Rules of Order and parliamentary procedure, the rules are different from a small body even from a large body. So when a legislature votes on amendments, they vote whether or not to adopt that amendment and include it in the legislation that they will then later vote on. In a small body like this, it doesn't work that way. If there's an amendment made, you vote on the amended motion. It's either adopted or rejected. If it's rejected, you go back to the original motion, which can be further amended if so, sorry. Are we clear on that?
All right. So on the amended motion, Ms. Bertschel, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Earnshaw.
Nay.
Mr. Rhodes.
Nay.
Mrs. Donches.
Aye.
Ms. Fuller.
Nay.
Mr. Polakana.
Aye.
Mr. Bacher.
Nay.
Mr. Stoltz.
Nay.
Ms. Hyde.
Nay.
Mr. Bauer.
Nay.
Eight aces, one.
Okay, now we're back to the original language of the motion. Is there any final comment before we vote on the language as is on the, Mr. Rhodes?
I would like to go around full circle since I started this resolution. My concern is a particular resolution, a political resolution, I think should be taken out of this setting and put in a public place where it can be viewed by before and come to a meeting. These other attachments, they're fine where they are, but this is something a little bit different. This is the resolution really, and it's not encumbered with contracts and other things like this. This is strictly a technical statement, and I think something like this you can publicize before the meeting, not just at the meeting. However, I have done a bit of research on vouchers. I've written about it. I've fought against it. I am going to support this because I have very strong feelings against the voucher programs that have now been put out there. I have no support whatsoever with what our governor is passing this resolution.
Any other final comments? Ms. Donches.
I think there are so many questions, so many unanswered understandings, that vouchers aren't really seeming, that bills aren't really understood, because the bill isn't right, and we don't really know what we're resolving to, uh, what it does or for. I move that the table is presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded every table. It is not debatable. We will have a vote, and it requires a majority to table. Two thirds, two thirds, two thirds, two thirds. All right, that'll be six votes to table. Ms. Bertschel, you call the roll, please.
Ms. Hyde.
No.
Mr. Earnshaw.
Nay.
Mr. Rhodes.
Nay.
Mrs. Donches.
Aye.
Ms. Fuller.
No.
Mr. Polakana.
Aye.
Mr. Bacher.
No.
Mr. Stoltz.
Aye.
Mr. Bauer.
No.
Six nays, three ayes.
All right, we're back to the motion again. Ms. Bertschel, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Earnshaw.
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes.
Aye.
Mrs. Donches.
Nay.
Ms. Fuller.
Aye.
Mr. Polakana.
Aye, standing. I'm going to be standing.
Mr. Bacher.
Aye.
Mr. Stoltz. Ms. Hyde.
Aye.
Mr. Bauer. Six ayes, two nays, one extension.
Motion passes. We will now go on to business operations. Is there any objection to putting items one, two, three, five, oops, one, two, three, four, two, two, three, five, and six together? And it's excluding the pure choice energy and approval of Enerknock. That would be a separate motion. Is there any objection to that? Can I have a motion to add effect, please?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion with those items? Not appearing, Ms. Bertschel, you call the roll, please.
Ms. Fuller.
Aye.
Mr. Polakana.
Aye.
Mr. Bacher.
Aye.
Mr. Earnshaw.
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes.
Aye.
Mrs. Donches.
Aye.
Mr. Stoltz.
Aye.
Ms. Hyde.
Aye.
Mr. Bauer.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
We have a termination of third choice energy and approval of the Enerknock Demand/Response Sales and Services Agreement of twenty fifteen. It's my understanding that the clause that we objected to at the last meeting about the contract has been revised and revised. All right, can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Not appearing, Ms. Bertschel, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Earnshaw.
Aye.
Ms. Hyde.
Aye.
Mr. Stoltz.
Aye.
Mr. Bacher.
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes.
Aye.
Mrs. Donches.
Aye.
Mrs. Fuller.
Aye.
Mr. Polakana.
Aye.
Mr. Bauer.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Are there any new items to come before the board this evening, Ms. Fuller?
Very quickly, I would suggest that we make all board members alternate, alternates for LCTI, as we have in the past. And I would also suggest that as I will be on the CLI group board, that someone else report on LCTI.
Okay. Let me ask the sense of the board. Do we want to put a motion right now to make all board members alternates to LCTI and therefore accomplish Ms. Fuller's request?
So moved.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion of that? Not appearing, Ms. Bertschel, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Earnshaw.
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes.
Aye.
Mrs. Donches.
Aye.
Ms. Fuller.
Aye.
Mr. Polakana.
Aye.
Mr. Bacher.
Aye.
Mr. Stoltz.
Aye.
Ms. Hyde.
Aye.
Mr. Bauer.
Aye.
I would suggest the LCTI delegation get together and decide on the other issue this board, so that, and let me know what the outcome is, who's going to be the primary for tea in the secondary. We'll put them on the agenda that way. Ms. Bertschel also, sort of copying Ms. Bertschel myself, so we know which way to go. No other new items coming before Mr. Della and Mr. Earnshaw?
Really quick, I just wanted to express my public appreciation to the Amas High School Band. I had the privilege of attending their concert on Friday, and it was marvelous.
Thank you, Mr. Earnshaw. I'm sure that the band and its members and its director will appreciate that. We had a clear session preceding this meeting to discuss confidentiality. Tuesday, we have the Ira Middle School Band and Orchestra Concert and the Alberta's and Lincoln Winter Concert. Wednesday, we have the Ira Chorus Concert and the Lower McGinsey Middle School Choral Concert. On Thursday, we have the, another version of the Lower McGinsey Middle School Choral Concert. Friday, we have middle school early dismissal at eleven a.m., eleven a.m. dismissal for Amas High School, and seven p.m. we have the Amas High School Orchestra Concert. The following Friday, we have the early dismissal of secondary at eleven and elementary at twelve, and our next board meeting is January ninth. Now, I have a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.